Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Welcome you to the Extra Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, May 12, 2022 at 7:00. And start by introducing the board. I'm Langton Plummer, Chairman of the Board, and to my far. Robin.
Robin.
Introduce yourself.
I'm sorry.
Introduce yourself, please.
Robin. You can use that. Oh, yeah. Robin Tyner, alternate.
Gwen English.
John Gruder.
Aaron Brown.
Pete Cameron.
Jennifer Martel.
Nancy Belanger.
Thank you. We need to start off with the minutes of April 14th that provided in our packet. Open to comments.
I did have a couple.
Okay.
As I get it. On line, I think the first one was line 118. I don't know if you can hear me through this mask. It should be HDC, not HBC, Historic District Commission. And then on line 127, Anthony's, it's Z as in zebra, W A A N. And I think that was all I had. That's all I had.
Do you have any?
I had a couple.
Me and Flo's yours, sir. Or ladies, do you have them? Got comments?
I just had one quick one.
Okay.
Along the lines of Gwen's, on line 60, the landscape architect is Kyle Zick, not Kyle Zwick, so no W.
Which line?
60, six zero.
Okay. Oh, yes, okay.
I have a couple.
Okay.
Line 14.
Oh, we'll go right back to the beginning.
Right back. It's the "all of which were physically present." Now, that's a new expression that we've never used with respect to after we've identified ourselves. And I'm not sure why we're witches. Are we whom? In any event? But I think that whole, that phrase, "all of which were physically present," that's not needed.
Transition from remote? Is that why?
It might be, I think.
It could be.
Because some Conservation Commission, they had some that were still doing remotely for COVID reasons and.
Probably why.
Yeah.
We haven't had that, haven't used that language for a long time.
True.
If at all.
Lang, one comment.
Yes, one more.
John still got?
You all set? Can I have Pete?
I have one more.
Yes.
Way to financial calculate. Excuse me, I think that should be financially. It's a, we won't go into a grammarian lesson.
Okay.
And then one last one on line 173 and 174. Dave was talking about a presentation of a proposed new public safety complex at 6:00 PM. Now, maybe we should indicate what day that was. I didn't know off the top of my head.
May 4.
Okay, can we put May 4 in then? Thank you.
Okay.
I'm just looking for clarification, line 67 and 68, and maybe someone from the Academy can answer. Eight Gilman Lane will be demolished and four new two-family units, so I count that as eight, and two single-family units, 10, an increase of five units. So is it, is that, are those numbers? What are you, what are you building exactly?
Hello?
You're demolishing.
So that is, that is correct, demolishing eight Gilman Lane. The, the numbers, there's eight existing units on site. 35 Gilman Lane is currently a six-unit building, which is going to be remodeled into a two-unit building. So there are currently eight residential units.
Right.
On the site, two single families in a six, six units. One of the single families, eight Gilman, will be demolished. The six, the six-unit building will be converted to a two-family.
Two unit, yeah.
Yeah. So that's why the numbers, if you're looking at the additional units, there's also a subtraction of four units from 35 Gilman Lane that makes the, the total.
Okay, I guess, well, we're not clear in that. I don't know. I'll let.
Aren't you going to 13 units from eight?
Eight to 13 total, correct. Yes.
That's, that's the bottom line, John.
Yeah. Daniel may want to clarify that.
Yeah, that doesn't read right.
The numbers go, it doesn't, it doesn't add up.
That's not your issue, it's been minutes.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Do I have a motion to accept as, with corrections as noted?
No one.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Voice vote, those in favor, please, in cap, are saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? The ayes have it, thank you very much. All right. Continued public hearing on the application of Phillips Exeter Academy for multi-family site plan review, lot line adjustment, and shoreland, shoreline content, conditional use permit for the proposed construction of a faculty neighborhood development and associated site improvements on High Street and Gilman Lane. Subordinate properties located in the C1 Central Area Commercial and R2 Single Family Residential zoning districts and are identified as tax map parcel 71-117, 71-118, and 71-119. Planning Board Case Number 22-2. And Dave, do you have anything to start off, off with?
I don't, I don't think they have a microphone or something.
Oh, well, the little red light's on over there. I don't know what that means.
He doesn't have it.
Oh, he doesn't have a microphone, no.
No, I don't think, I think IT doesn't have a mic, so we all sharing one mic.
Step to the microphone, please.
I'll step to the microphone. As you said, they, I didn't get a memo out to you folks on this one.
Uh oh.
I was in, well, I had, I was in the COVID protocol, so I was unable to do that, but now I'm back. But they're seeking a lot line adjustment, multi-family site plan, shoreline conditional use permit, as you said, for, you know, proposed multi-family project. We did meet, discussed the site at the last hearing, couple of abutters, you know, raised some concerns, traffic and so forth, decided to do a site walk, the board conducted a site walk. I don't know why Bob didn't include those minutes, but I'll make sure those minutes come to you at the next meeting for review and approval. And here we are tonight. So if everyone, if no one has my previous memo with all the motions, I have a copy of that and I'll pass it out to give you the motions, because they are asking for a couple of waivers, grading within five feet of a property line, and the use of fertilizer for the, I think it's the one-year exemption, one year? Yeah, one-year exemption on the fertilizer use in the shoreline, plus the three motions for a lot line adjustment, conditional use permit, multi-family site plan. Does everyone have those or?
Please do.
You have them?
I have them.
You don't have them?
I could use a page.
Well, I have them.
If you have one, don't have one.
I could use one.
Thank you.
Oh, we got some coming down. I have it, but you're.
Oh, it's coming.
It's coming, coming, coming.
Is it just one?
No.
That's one page, right?
Yeah. It's only one page front and back.
Okay. Flo's yours.
Thank you. Corey Beldon with Altus Engineering. And I'm here with Mark Layton and Heather Taylor from Phillips Exeter Academy, Christina O'Brien and Rob Haberson from Marcus Square Architects, and Steve Perna, the traffic engineer, is also here as well. So we were back, we were here on April 14th to do the, the presentation. We had a pretty lengthy discussion about the project. I don't want to go into all the details about the project. At the end of the meeting, it was recommended to do a site walk, which was conducted on April 20th. I'm not sure if, I was not able to attend that, that meeting, but I did get briefed on the meeting. I just want to go over some of the items that were discussed at the site walk, go through the project, and then, I think, open it up to questions again if that's okay with the, with the board. So on the site walk, I believe one of the areas of, of concern was looking at the wooded area and how the, the lot drains over towards, towards the east. As the existing lot, actually, there, there's a high ridge along the top of the bank, and the drainage flows in this direction, so there's a, there's a good portion of the lot that currently drains this direction. It gets, crosses, you know, over, overland flow through this area. There's a catch basin over here, it goes over to Marlboro Street, goes back up and then collects back into the High Street drainage system. So what we're doing for this project is we're actually creating a swale along the property line here and putting a little depression back in the back corner of the building, right where the, you know, right, collecting basically everything from the site that's draining in this direction. We have a catch basin, this runs back into the roadway drainage, and then will go down into our rain garden, the new internal storage reservoir rain garden that we are proposing for the project that's down by the observatory. So as part of the project, we're going to, I think, really improve the drainage in this area. We're going to collect it, we're going to stop a lot of that, that flow that's coming, you know, that's crossing, certainly from this site, there's, there's still drainage that comes from the back of this property that drains, drains this way. We obviously cannot collect that, but we will be getting what's coming from the site and going, currently going in this direction. As noted, this, this, let me go back to, well, I don't think I need to on the site plan. This, this building setback is 15 feet on this side, and what we are providing here is actually a 26.6-foot setback from this corner to here. Obviously, that's the, the, the single tightest point. We're much, much further back over here, and then this building down here is actually a 34.7-foot setback. And I think, you know, there was, there was a lot of thought that was put into the, the layout for these buildings. You know, they were not positioned so that they face, losing the, my red dot, so that they face directly to the property. You know, they could have been on the, on the, on the, the setback and looking straight back towards them. They're angled, so they kind of look back into open areas. Same with this one. This provides an opening behind this building. There's a, there's a good opening in, in this area as well. So really tried to look at that during the, the site layout and, you know, provide a, provide a nice, you know, benefits both the, our site, but then also has least impact on the abutting properties as well. We've also looked at some, and we had some discussions with the owner of 25 High Street here about doing some potential modifications to the driveway to, to help their movement on exiting back onto High Street. And I think those are ongoing conversations that we're going to have with, with Phillips Exeter and the owner. I know that there was concern, or there was questions about the drainage for the rain garden that's in the middle here. This rain garden will provide treatment for, really collecting all of the, the roof runoff and a little, I think a little bit of the street here from these four buildings drained to here. This does then also drain back down to the other rain garden. So we are getting some, some, say, double treatment. The reason that this is, that we are putting this up here is to try to get a little bit of infiltration, because there are better soils up on this higher, higher level, whereas the soils down near the observatory are not as good soils for infiltration. So that was the purpose for this. We've also looked at the possibility to raise the grade along High Street at the front of this duplex. I think there was some, at the site walk, I think it was brought up, can you sort of slope the, the ground up from the sidewalk to reduce the amount of reveal from the foundation on this building? That certainly is a possibility right now. From the sidewalk to the grades in front of the, the building, it's about, about just a six-inch grade up, but we certainly could, could raise that about a foot more if, if requested to reduce the amount of that foundation reveal, which I think is, you know, looking down at some of the houses along High Street, some of them do have that slope up, but I think some of them are, are also flat. So we're open to any of those, open to that possibility of kind of regrading that area and trying to work with that if, if that is requested by the board. So I think those are the primary items that were discussed at, at the site walk. We're certainly open to answering any additional questions if there is, are any from the board.
Okay. Thank you, by the way, for making those arrangements for the site walk and the time. We appreciate that. Really helped a whole lot. Any questions from the board? Gwen, you're nodding, is that a yes?
Gwen, if, if no one else wants to go first, I, I'll ask a couple and then.
Okay.
I'll let someone else go. I do have a lot of questions, but one of the, I wanted to ask one that came up when you were just describing the plan. When you're talking about gathering the water kind of in back of that one lot that has the store, the old High Street Market, when you do the calculations, I'm guessing you just do the calculations for your site, do you, do you factor in all the runoff that's going to come from that, that one lot, that one lot that's not part of your property? Because that's all paved and?
We do. Any off-site runoff that's coming, that we feel is coming into our site that we're, we're going to collect, we do, we do collect that. Most of this runoff from behind the old market here is actually coming through this way and coming over, over here. So not a lot of it is actually coming straight back into our, our area, but it's sort of draining on an angle this, this way.
So the pond, the ponding that's there now on site today is from your lot? It's not, it's not so much from, from?
Not as, as much, because a lot of, yeah, a lot of this drains in, more in this direction.
Okay. Um, I'll add just two more in and I'll stop. One thing that I was concerned about at the last meeting was the treatment on the plantings in front of the new house on High Street. And you gave your reasons for not, just for maintenance purposes, you didn't want to have a lot of plantings there. But I know when you came before the Historic District, that was something that the folks on the HDC had commented on. They all wanted some plantings there just to cover up the foundation. And I guess I have two questions. Is there enough granite veneer on the house that you're tearing down that you could, could put a granite veneer on all four, all four sides of the new house? Or is it, I can't remember if you just had granite veneer on two or three sides of the house that's being torn down?
I'm not sure what that is.
Hi, excuse me, I'm Mark Layton from the Academy. So we did look at that, Gwen. The problem is the existing veneer on the building is varies from, I think, eight-inch to 12-inch in thickness.
Oh, I thought it was like four inches.
We thought it was too. And so we did try to do that, and we actually were going that way, and then when we went out and looked at it again, it's such a thick piece of granite and varies in size that it's just not feasible for that on this. So, but we are open to, I think it was Martel had proposed to bring the grade up to cover. There was a parging of concrete.
Yeah.
Which I thought the, the HDC was, was fine with that approach, was to have that as parched concrete, but, I mean, we're certainly open to, to landscaping approach, just rather have it look good instead of, you know, continuously look good, instead of something that we have to, to always try to, either try to maintain or not do well with.
Right.
So that's the reasoning why we're proposing, just to keep it very simple. And we think it's consistent with the other properties in the neighborhood.
I think the parging is not.
No, I'm talking, the landscaping, I'm sorry, the landscaping, the landscaping approach. It's consistent with the other properties.
Jackson.
Sure.
Just one thing, the house that's staying on High Street, right in front of that, for about three feet out from there, it's a whole, earth is raised up. Did you look at that? It must be the way they built houses in the old days, because it probably helped insulate the basement. But it's built up, so you wouldn't have to do as much landscaping if it's smaller, shorter.
On 35 High Street.
Yeah, why wouldn't you match that with the house next door?
With bringing the grade up? No, we're open to that for sure. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's something we look, we talked to on site and we, it was looked at and we can do that.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, there is a, there is a, there's an entrance, a porch that's going in.
Right, as there is in the other house.
Right, exactly. So we're talking.
Yeah, yeah. On either side.
Yep, no, we're definitely open to that.
Head to break.
I'll let somebody else go.
Give you a break and come back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. So following up on Gwen's question about the drainage, so when we went on the site walk, granted, it had rained quite heavily, I think, two days earlier, but there was still quite a bit of standing water on that property line. So I came back and looked at the grading plan, and, you know, I understand what you're saying about that the drainage is being collected in that low point. I guess my question is, you know, that, so it seems like it collects at that low point, but there's really nothing to keep it in. So if that low point overflows, if that yard drain, for example, gets clogged with leaves, or if whatever, for whatever, you know, if it just rains a lot and that overflows, I think that it seems like you're collecting water and now you're going to have concentrated water. What, what happens, I guess, when it overflows? Or is there a failsafe? It seems to me like it's going to, there's a potential to create a problem on the adjacent.
Right, so the, the failsafe is, is, is to use a beehive grate for the top, so it's not a flat, a drain, flat drainage structure that leaves can cover up and then, and clog. So putting a beehive grate, it's the rounded grates that there, when the leaves fall, you know, it won't, because it's a dome, you know, it has less, you know, likelihood to, to be, to get clogged in, in that situation. So that's, that's what we're proposing to do.
Yeah, I understand, I understand a beehive grate, but it looks to me like your elevations are, I mean, that's a PYD number eight is, forgive me one second, rim elevation 41.85. And then your 42 contour is like right next to that. So that's .185 feet, it's a couple inches that, of water that can be stored in that low area. So it's going to overflow before, you know, if you get six inches of leaf litter clogging that beehive grate.
I believe the intent is that this, this is to be, are you saying that?
Your existing contour line of 42 looks like it's right next to, just to the east.
Yeah, we can make, I think we're, we're, and I can check the modeling, but this is intended to be a, a good foot deep depression, and, and certainly we have a little bit of space in here if this contour has to be, has to come around. And I can double-check that, but the intent is, is to have a good, you know, a, a good foot depth to that, to this ponding, ponding area that will allow the collection of, of the water in, in there. And we, we have the, the room and the, you know, the, the ability to do that in, in that area, and I'll double-check that. I can't see what, on this right now, what that contour is, because I know there's a contour right here that's running along the, the side.
To me, like, it's the 42, so it's not, you're not getting a foot there for sure.
Yeah, so certainly this 30, 43, you know, we can make sure that, that there's at least a foot of, of storage in that pond area, which I believe was the, the intent, and I can just, like I said, I'll just verify that. I think we have some spot grades as well in this area, so I will definitely verify that.
Okay.
And the intent is to maintain this storage for, I believe it is the 25, at least up to the 25-year storm event. So there's not a lot of surface runoff coming here, but we do want to collect it before it is coming offsite. All of, with, with the new grading, all of, all of the buildings, you know, in existing conditions, this. of the buildings, you know, in existing conditions, this, you know, the top of the berm is actually a high point. And a lot of this flow, you know, all of this area sort of drains over to this point. But in the, in the proposed design, really all of the front of the roof, front of the properties from the ridge line of the roof is all draining frontwards to the street and then being collected up here. So we've reduced a lot of the flow that is going there. It still gets that, sort of the back half of the roofs that come back. But then, you know, would come down into this area and be collected there. And that's what we're really trying to, trying to collect in that area and keep it from, again, as it currently does, goes across, across these properties over to, there's a catch basin over here that then, I believe it's, I don't know, I believe it's on this property that then connects over to Marabell Street. But we'll, again, the intent is to pick up the onsite, all of our onsite flows that are coming to this point and divert them back into the roadway drainage and then down to the rain garden.
So, I mean, I understand you're saying this seems like a better approach than the current condition. But the current condition, this is all wooded. So the runoff situation is not the same. You can't really compare it. This is, you're adding a lot of impervious surface. So, I mean, my concern is, you know, I understand you've done the modeling. I appreciate you checking it. My concern is that the volume of runoff, you know, for the 50-year storm, for the 100-year storm, it sounds like you just said, it is going to overwhelm the system.
Well...
Where is that going to go?
Certainly a 100-year storm in current conditions, it's, I don't know what happens out there.
But in current conditions, it's falling on a woodland. It's totally a different situation. In this condition, you have concentrated runoff.
I understand. And we're significant, if we're talking about what's coming to this point right here, what we're doing right now is we're significantly, I know it's a wooded, wooded, current wooded lot. We have, the impervious is just maybe half of this roof and half of this roof. And then there's a lot of grassed open area. There's some tree areas. But, so we're reducing what's draining to this area by, you know, close to a third, and then also collecting it. And we are, you know, we are picking up that. Again, I think we're making this a very, a significant improvement to what's the current conditions.
So I understand you're saying that. I still don't think I, I don't, I don't think I know what's going to happen in a 100-year storm, because now there's no wooded area to sort of capture some of that rainfall. And I just, I'm concerned about essentially this system becoming overwhelmed and creating erosion on the adjacent neighbors' properties. So if you, I would appreciate just going back and taking a look and maybe, you know, sort of ensuring some way that that is not going to happen, whether you use like some kind of riprap attenuator or something just to prevent that situation from occurring.
Yeah. We'll verify the storage in there. Again, you know, the intent is to store at least the 25-year storm event onsite. I think we can look at and see if it's, if we can get 50-year storm. And I think that's the criteria. I don't know, you know, a sort of 100-year storm event is a really big storm.
Yeah, but they happen pretty frequently these days. Usually, I mean, my understanding is that a storm on a system like this has to have some kind of overflow that's reasonable in the case of a hurricane storm.
Right. And certainly currently, there's existing flows that go oversight. And where, you know, maybe there would be an overflow, but I think the 100-year overflow would be significantly less than an overflow in existing conditions, right? Because we're taking the 50-year storm away and storing it and converting it.
But the existing condition isn't, I guess my concern is that you're concentrating, you're sending all the water, and I don't want to belabor this, but, you know, you're concentrating the flow of water. So it's, right now, it's all falling on, you know, some of it's falling on the road maybe, but then it's running through woodland. It's all kind of like percolating throughout. So, but now you're concentrating it in a swale and sending it to one point. And then if it overflows that point, that's where the erosion is going to occur. So that's just my concern, is that it's all going to this place and it doesn't seem like there's a failsafe for the 100-year storm, which we know is going to happen soon. You know, they just, they happen frequently. So, so I appreciate you just kind of looking at that and maybe sending a memo or something just saying this is our solution.
We can do that, certainly.
My question relating to that is, what's the elevation of the, I'll call it the drain that will direct the water on down? And what's the capacity of that drain? I don't know. I mean, because that could be the, you know, the choke in the bottleneck, enabling that additional moisture and water to flow.
Yeah. And I'm going to, I mean, I can take...
I mean, are you anticipating that you will have standing water in that after, after storm that's holding water?
Yeah.
And then the idea is the excess will then will flow away?
Yeah.
So my question is, what's the capacity of that portion of the system? Will that amount of water be able to flow, or is it too, it's going to be choked, if that makes any sense?
No, the...
Besides leaves and things getting in the way occasionally.
Right. And I'm just trying to do a quick check here to see. So on a, on a 25-year storm event, the amount of flows going to that point are 2 CFS, 2.04 CFS, 2 cubic feet per second. So 25-year storm event, so the eight-inch storm, so we've sized this, or the eight-inch inlet pipe to account for that. That's certainly adequate with 2 CFS coming to that point. I can find out what the 50-year storm event is, but certainly the sizing of the infrastructure, I think, is, there's not a significant amount of flow coming to this point, again, because we have significantly reduced the watershed, everything from the front of the building, if forward is going back out into the street. So there's not a lot of flow there. We certainly will make, you know, look at the 50-year storm event. Let me see, PA 50-year storm event, 2.6 CFS coming to that location. So I don't have, we didn't, we did model, but we, the, both DES and Town Guidelines only ask for up to the 50-year storm events. We've, I have the results here for the 50-year storm event. We certainly have the 100-year in our system. But again, 2.6 CFS going to that location is pretty, pretty minor. And we can collect that with, you know, I guess we have an eight-inch culvert at that location.
We do have, experiencing more frequent storms.
And we can put a 12-inch in. It's not, the size of the pipe is not a big deal if there's concern that that's inadequate, if there's going to be...
I think our concern is, and I'm not trying to speak for Jen, but we are seeing more frequent storms. We're experiencing longer storms. I remember you'd have a heck of a thunder shower and the next five days would be beautiful sunny days. We're likely to get two or three storms in a row now. So even though it's 25-year storm, those three storms may exceed that 25 in those three days. So that's our concern.
We try to be conservative in our, in our designs as well, just because we do see the same types of things. So certainly looking at that and making sure that we're accounting for that, that area. I think that's, that's not a, you know, there's not a significant amount of flow. We can certainly collect that and make sure that we're, you know, collecting that and keeping that onsite to the extent possible.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, Gwen? Back to you.
Just a follow-up on that. And this is no disrespect for the work that you've done and what you've presented to us. But I'm just wondering, is it, is it reasonable to have, this is a question for you, Dave, to have UEI look at this again and just make sure that they're totally comfortable with, with this and addressing the questions that Jen has proposed? I don't know. I mean, this is worrisome.
I could ask them, they did review this?
I assume that they looked at it very carefully, but...
I can ask them specifically. I just want to say, we do not regulate 100-year storms. So our regs have, you know, we can't, I mean, if we want to have that conversation, start regulating for 100-year storm, and that's another conversation that the regs got to change. Right now, we only look at the, up to the 50. So that's what our regs...
Yeah. And I think I'm not suggesting that this needs to be designed for the 100-year storm, and by any means. I think what I'm, my concern is the proximity of this to three abutters properties and the sort of, it's sort of just more of a practical thing that like, you know, you're collecting concentrated storm water in this small area. And it just, it looks to me like it could easily overflow if I'm looking at the elevations properly. I may not be, but I would appreciate, I mean, I would appreciate having a just another parabola.
The elevations look right. I mean, it's about .15. I mean, it's...
That much water, yeah.
So we, you know, we will make sure that we have the storage in there if that, if that drops down six inches, or if we build that berm up along the edges, as I mentioned. But I think what we've, what we were doing, what, you know, what, when we were looking that, at this in the design, even though we were reducing the flows coming to that location, I think the regulation is to not increase the peak flows coming from your site to a current point, right? So we were not increasing that. We, in theory, we could have just modeled it and said, we're reducing the flows going offsite, but we wanted to not just reduce it, but collect it and then bring it back.
Manage it.
So manage it and keep it onsite and just not have, not have it go offsite. So that was the intent of the design. Certainly, you know, we'll look at the details of the grading, making sure that that, that ponding area that we were proposing, because it is at the low point where all of that site currently flows to, we went right into the corner, whereas the low point, and trying to create that little ponding area so that we can pond it, have a catch basin, or, you know, drain it, drain, and then bring it back to our site rather than having it go offsite. So again, we'll, we'll look at, you know, make sure that, you know, we are, again, we're not increasing the offsite runoff from the site, and we're trying to keep it onsite and bring it down to the rain garden.
Do the buildings have a drip edge?
They do, yes.
And is the drip edge...
It's not a, okay.
That's what I was asking, does the drip edge have a drainage system underneath?
No, no. It's just a landscape drip edge. It's not a designed storm water treatment drip edge with a, you know, 24-inch deep rock underdrain system. It's not that type of drip edge.
I mean, I'm almost wondering if that would be a better solution, because then, I mean, really, your only runoff is from those roofs. So instead of having the flow go to the corner and then...
Yeah. They all do have foundation drains around the buildings as well. So there's a drip edge, there's rock, there's a stone drip edge around them, there's a foundation drain, there's not a drain in between, another drain in between. But there is a foundation drain. All of the new buildings do have foundation drains around them. The drip edge has a rock that goes down, and I believe it's six inches. But it's not a, like I said, it's not a underdrained drip edge.
Okay.
So, and to be honest, those, because they weren't, even though they do provide, they're going to provide some infiltration from the roof runoff, but those are not modeled in the drainage system because they're not engineered design systems. They do provide benefits and, but they don't, but that's not modeled in the system.
Okay. So that 2 CFS does not consider the drip edge, which is probably where most of the runoff would be going. Okay.
Exactly. Yep.
That makes me feel a little better about it. I was just thinking it was all coming from the roof and going into the system.
A couple more. In our notes, there was a comment from the natural resource planner about supplemental planting, plantings in the buffers. And the response from you was that more would be added. But I don't know, I only have the plans that I got initially and I, it doesn't appear to me that, I mean, that may have just been an agreement and you may not have had a chance to put them on the plant sets that we have.
No, they were, they were included in the plant set. There, this area right here, which is sort of a little bit of a bear spot, again, this, can you see it right there?
Right there.
This whole area is supplemental planning. And then we've also have some on the, in the outlet area, all in here is actually more additional supplemental planning. So those are the two areas that we're providing additional landscape, additional well and buffering, buffer plantings for the project.
And I'm guessing that those were, especially the larger one was located there because of the plowing of the four spaces that are up above? Is that, was that what drove planting in that area? Or is that not...
Not necessarily. I don't think that drove that. I think it was really just looking at, at the wooded buffer line all along the bank and seeing where there was some, where there was opportunities to provide some additional planting. A lot of it is really fully grown out along that bank. So there's really, you know, it was just finding areas that were, you know, had some openings where you could, you know, do some filling in into the, into the buffer area. And those were the two sites that were identified.
Okay.
Was that a recent comment?
It was in the packet. No, it was in the packet. It was one of the points in the packet, and it had been answered.
I spoke with Kristen, and she did, they installed all of her comments and the concombs about conditions as well.
Okay. I figured that was it. It was just, I needed to kind of see where the plantings were, because it wasn't, I didn't, I didn't realize that's what that was. And just for clarification for me, you're putting a no plow or no storage of snow sign. Where is that going? Is that at the four?
That was at the four parking spaces.
That's there. So that's not going to be...
Correct.
So where is, where is the snow storage going for that?
We've, we revised our curb line over here, so we kind of ended here. So there's, this is all flat area, so it can be stored in this area over here across the street.
Okay. You've got plantings, new plantings there. Are those going to be moved? You've got two ISs.
Let's see what there's, what's in here. So this is the planting plan. So yeah, it would be in this area over in here, primarily.
Or it's also went north, right?
Yeah. And they can also plow up, up towards this area. They can pull it out and push it north, is, push it up, up the street if possible. But...
Can you adjust those trees maybe a little bit if those are new? I can't tell LF, sorry.
Sweet gum. It's a crab apple, I guess.
Do you see where...
No, yeah, it's a, there's a sweet gum and a, I can't quite, flowering dogwood. See it. And maybe it's not an issue, maybe it's not going to be an issue. I just hate to see trees planted and then snow.
If there's a, yeah, they're pretty, they're a pretty good distance. The center of the tree looks like it's 15, 20 feet from the edge of the pavement. So, but, you know, that could be, you know, we are trying to, we have a slew of utility lines running through the project in this area. So we're trying to position, again, the base of the tree away from those utility lines as well. So it's kind of working to try to find the best solution, best location for that tree. That's where it's positioned. But we can look at that. But it is about, it looks like, just scaling wise, 15, the base of the tree is 15 plus feet from the edge of the pavement, which would still provide a good area for snow storage.
The southernmost end of the road coming in, a little bit to the right and down, keep going down, and then sharp right. Right, now look down a little bit. It's like getting your back scratched. To the right, to the right a little bit, there's a, right below, right there. What is that?
direction. Ooh, whoa, wow. Here we, the current garage faces this way, so you would have to come and make, so the garage is going to be reconstructed so that it faces this direction.
Okay.
So this little square here is just a garage modification.
Okay, all right. Trash collection, does that get left, is it, are these set up like, or you're picking, Academy's taking care of all of that? All right.
Haven't seen that little trash truck running around?
I haven't. I have, I struggled with the sidewalk going in from High Street, and how it, if my memory is right, the sidewalk goes right into the pavement of your neighbor, so it's kind of a weird sidewalk. It's, it's a road, a sidewalk, but it, but then it's got road on the other side, it's like a little pedestrian island.
There's a, yeah, the pavement on their property is, you can see this line, this is their edge of pavement.
That's their edge, so there's a little bit of green?
So there's a, there's a, again, it's not a very well-maintained landscape strip right now in that area, most of it's on their property. We have a, but there is a bit of a buffer between the pavement and where the sidewalk is.
Right. And you're, I don't know, you've got a very pretty mock-up of what it will look like, it's kind of an aerial view, and in that image, it looks, yeah, it looks lovely, you've got some trees there, and it looks, but I'm guessing that's probably not really what it's going to look like. I don't know, I just, I mean, it's your entrance, it would be nice to have that be visually pleasing, it's...
So there isn't, as you know, as you mentioned, I mean, the property line, we're basically, the sidewalk goes right up to our property line.
Right.
And so I have talked to the owner, and, you know, there's not a lot left between this edge of the sidewalk, between our proper line and what you've noted as the edge of the driveway, so his preference is not to have anything there. I mean, he's given us permission to take the trees down. We've talked about maybe putting a fence, not necessarily a privacy fence, but just a fence to delineate the property line, so people aren't cutting across both ways, you know, so, I mean, I think that's something that we'll probably end up doing more just for that, so that, you know, someone's walking down the sidewalk, they're not trying to cut across to his property.
Right.
He just, he's been very open, very willing, he just, at this point, he's asked not to, he's not requested to have anything planted there.
Hmm, not even like grass?
Well, with grass, for sure, yeah, we'll make sure that, I mean, it's, we'll do something as least grass.
You'll clean it up?
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, we'll definitely, I mean, the trees are going away, so there's going to have to be something done, and so we'll definitely, grass, or mulch, or, you know, whatever it needs to happen that he wants, but he's just, he's just, has not requested anything be planted back.
Hmm, that's too bad, okay. While we're on the subject of a Butters, the, oh gosh, the house south of the Zwan's house, it doesn't, did they not care whether there were any trees planted, or was there a buffer?
No.
I know the Zwans seem to be very concerned about it, but that's where all the plantings seem to be, and I'm just surprised that the, his neighbor didn't, I don't know...
Nope, he did, we've had conversations, and so he's, he has seen what we're proposing now, which is a row of arbivores, and, so we have a six-foot privacy fence, a row of arbivores, plus some other plantings, that are, other trees that are there, and he's comfortable with that approach.
Okay.
And I have that in writing if the board wants to see that, so, can I have, and Mr. Zwan has also, in writing, agreed to what has been proposed for plants, because we're actually planting on his property, too.
Okay, so he's all squared away with this?
Why not, he is.
Okay, all right.
And that, I mean, I think the landscaping plan should show...
That's not what the landscaping plan shows.
It's the revised one that we sent in, should show that.
Oh, is there an updated one? Okay, I have one from, yeah, March 31st.
There wasn't anything...
After the TRC?
Yeah, there was, after the TRC, April 5th was the date.
Are you looking at the April 5th?
I have March 31st.
Yeah, that's what I have, too.
The one that has addressed the TRC comments, right?
Yeah, we just addressed the TRC.
So you would be correct, it would not be on what you're seeing, then?
Okay. Yeah, looks, there's just one tree there.
But we did, we did extend, you know, preserve a lot of this, the, this is on the one stop of Zwan, this is here.
Did you submit a bunch of copies of the plans to the planning board?
Sorry, what's up?
Did you submit plans, updated plans to the planning board at this meeting?
No.
Oh, that's my, I misspoke.
We usually send them out.
No, yeah.
We have not submitted anything since the last seminole session.
So my mistake, yeah, we addressed the comments, but it was in writing, it was not, it's reissued. So, but on the landscape, it does, it does show, I mean, we're trying to keep existing, shows two UAs.
Can you pull it up on your PDF, on the screen? Can you pull the updated landscaping plans to show the board?
I don't have an updated landscaping plan.
Oh, so you never got onto the plans?
It's on the plans now, it's not what you have.
Okay.
It was what we addressed his comments and shared with him, but it was my mistake that I thought it was included in the package, it does not. We can share that if you...
So there were discussions, I guess, after this seminole, but there was not a revised set of plans submitted since our last planning board meeting. So I guess there's some additional plantings that PEA has been working with the Butters on, just to address their concerns.
So is that something that will be submitted to us? Is that something we can make a condition? Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, you can make, you know...
Yeah, we'd like, it'd be nice, it'd be good for, to be on the record.
Any other questions at this point?
I have to have that.
Rob, go ahead. Certainly, the final plans that we submit for planning board approval, we'll have any additional, you know, we'll have those changes, we'll submit a letter, in the letter, what we'll do, you know, we'll address any of the comments that, you know, or conditions of approval, anything else that changes, we'll also address that to, you know, to let you know that, you know, PEA has worked with this Butters, and we've revised the plantings along that property line, and this is what is now being proposed for that site, you know, for that area, so we'll address that if that is a concern. Certainly, PEA has been, you know, working with those Butters to address, you know, their concerns in plantings in that area, so there has been some other, some additional trees that are going to be provided, so that'll be in the final plan.
Great. I just had a quick question about the wooden screen fence.
Yes, go ahead.
Is there a detail for that in the drawing set?
I don't believe there is.
Has the design of the wooden screen fence and the materials and all of that been agreed upon with the Butters?
No. Well, I think there's been discussions with the Butters also about the possibility of using a vinyl fence as well, certainly that has more longevity to it than the wooden fences. We have looked at a detail for the wooden fence, basically, it's a, you know, pressure-treated posts with cedar, cedar board slats, so, but we are, PEA is looking at the option of also using vinyl, which is a nice product, so we are trying to, again, resolve that with PEA and then with the Butters, so.
Great.
So, I mean, so as far as getting where the documents show a six-foot picket wood fence, so, like, as Corey said, we're open to ideas or options, that's, I guess, the baseline that we have right now, is that, so, I mean, if there's a preference to do something different, we're open to that. Like Corey said, we've talked to the Butters about doing something more on the vinyl side, I'm not sure that's, would look the best there either, so I think that's what we're, as far as right now, the baseline is the six-foot picket, wood picket fence.
Okay.
A cedar fence.
Yeah, I mean, I personally don't have a preference, I think it's just, it's really up to, I think the Butters should have a say in it, since it's so close to their property.
Yeah, I know, we have had that conversation, and I would say that they have not, we have not, we're open to that, and we have, and I would say that they were open also, that they've saw benefits both ways, so...
That's a better resolution than us determining what's going to be there, which we've always favored the Butters getting together and deciding what's going to work for both, yeah.
Sure, if you, we have, do have a detail if you're interested in seeing it.
This is what's, it's a little hard to see, it's just my phone, this is what was sent out, but this is what was proposed now, so that's the wooden, just a simple wooden privacy fence.
Hmm.
Pretty, pretty standard as far as they go.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, like as Mark mentioned, if the Butters have any interest in a different product, they're certainly open.
Okay.
Okay, let me, okay, Glenn, go ahead.
Just one, I guess this goes to Mark, and this is not something that's in our purview, but I'm just curious, with all the work you've done to try to get geothermal heating and into your buildings, I'm just curious if you've, have you considered solar panels? What has gone into the thought process of trying to be environmentally conscious with these new buildings?
So we did very much at the beginning, and so we felt like, because of the site and the layout of the site, it would have been really hard to try to do geothermal here, and in some cases, it wasn't possible with the layout, so what we're using is an air-source heat pump, which is really the next step down as far as efficiencies, but it meets our sustainability goals of using electricity for heat and cooling, so we're not using any fossil fuels on the site. It's got, the building envelope is an enhanced building envelope, so it's, you know, better, it's above and beyond code. We looked at solar panels, and because of the roof orientation, and the roof, it didn't, wasn't a very feasible option for solar panels, but on, as a campus as a whole, we're actually doing this as a campus, is trying to do more about ground-mounted solar panels, instead of trying to do a couple panels here and there, and trying to consolidate as a campus, and look at large opportunities that we have. So we think we have, under our climate action plan, we feel like we have, we have those opportunities on campus, be able to do very large ground-mounted solar, which is more cost-effective way to do it.
Okay.
But we definitely, as with any project, sustainability is a, is a very, very much a goal, and so we've looked at all of those as we develop this project, and focused on items like the building envelope, material selections, indoor air quality, landscaping, we're not doing irrigation, you know, things like that, other than in the front, there's one section in the front we're proposing irrigation, so...
Great, good to know, thank you.
Robin?
And I don't know if this is something that I missed before, but I guess I'd want to know more about the fertilizer again, and I know the area very well, my son went to PEA for all four years, played football back behind there, we used the dog park, I've run right through this area over probably at least 100 times in all seasons, so I'm familiar with it, and my background is oceanography, oceanography meteorology, and, and I know there's been several times in the last few years where PEA has come before the planning board with waivers for fertilizers, and there's the football field, and there's been some other ones, and we're always going to change to something else someday, but we haven't. But I also know our oceans aren't healthy, our estuary is not healthy, the river is right here, the drainage is right here, we feed directly into all of that, and I don't know if you've talked to, I know PEA has environmental and sustainability clubs, I don't know, and really smart kids, if they've had a chance that, hey, is there something better we could do, or if we've talked to the sustainability committee here, or the Piscataqua Water Keepers group that has done some phenomenal work and has done some phenomenal briefings on river health and the problems that are largely from fertilizers, so I just would like to hear more about that.
So, as the waiver indicated, we're requesting a one-year waiver for fertilizer, to use fertilizer for just the plant establishment period, but other than that, no fertilizers on-site for this project.
So they won't come back and have to get, like you said, I've been on...
It's just a one-year...
Probably three times that I've seen PEA come forward for a waiver.
So for this site, no waivers for, again, one waiver just for the plant establishment period, just to get the grass, you know, get all, get the grasses established for that one-year period, but we're, then we're not going to use any fertilizers on-site.
Would you be open to talking to the sustainability group here or at your school or the Piscataqua Water Keepers and see if there's other alternatives for establishment?
I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we're open to it, I think, you know, it's just a one-year, one-year period that we're asking for, so, but yeah, I mean, we're open to having those conversations. I mean, as you mentioned, we have, you know, we have, in facilities, we have a manager of sustainability and natural resources, and so his outreach is with all the environmental clubs on campus, including, you know, the river committee and other committees in Exeter, so the waiver that you're referencing is that we did go to the planning board and ask for the waiver, but that was, the focus was our athletic fields and our, in that area and aquifer protection zone, and in the river, close to the Exeter River, so, but we do have a very, very, I would say, progressive plan with using, and I'm not going to be able to say the right words, but it's as far as what we use for fertilizer and the type of fertilizer, and in trying to go as far as minimizing, what is it, not the phosphates, but the, whatever, nitrogen, sorry, nitrogen, you know, as far as that, I know that there was a committee in place a couple years ago that was, that was beyond, behind the ordinance change that came about, so that was really the focus of that, of that variance, was our athletic fields.
Right, and even with that, I think I voted against you on that, but with my son planning, it's just, because it is a big deal, and if anybody in the Northeast, in New Hampshire, has the assets to figure out a better way, PEA does.
Sure.
The assets and the resources and the people, and, so I guess, yeah, if you'd be willing to talk to, I mean, I can connect you, the Piscataqua Water Keepers that really work in this area, or our own sustainability committee, and just see, in general, maybe it's a bigger thing than this one project, but because there's multiple...
Sure, yeah.
Come up multiple times.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, I just said it, Brian. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to open the floor, to the floor to the public, so if you would like to speak, John, please step to the microphone.
I'm John Donnell, and I live at 25 High Street, and to keep this short, I've written it out here, and it isn't long, and...
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, I'll take one to the record, thanks.
Mark and I are going to have a meeting this next week about this, and we'll see if we can resolve the situation, but I thought I'd bring it up anyway, so here it is.
John, have you read it into the record?
Sure. Would you like to read this in the record, John, or would you like us to do it?
Read it into the record, John. Do you mind reading your letter into the record? Because...
I have Macaulay's General...
Oh, okay.
...right on, and it really screws up my reading, unless I have a real thick bag of file.
All right, you want me to read it for you?
Yes.
I'd be willing to do that, I think it should be read into the record, or Dave, or...
Yep, please do, yep.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
I would.
No, I know, sure. All right, from, this is from the gentleman who just handed this out to the planning board, I'm just reading it into the record, from John Donald, if I got your name right, 25 High Street Historic District, Exeter, New Hampshire, May 12th, 2022, to the Exeter Planning Board, subject safe automobile access to High Street from 25 High Street. I have no objection to the creation of a new Phillips Exeter PEA residential area on High Street. The problem we have is the lack of a safe forward driving access to High Street. Gilman Lane has provided us with a safe turnaround to enter High Street for the last 50 years. The new construction will remove this end of Gilman Lane, I have tried to find a new safe turnaround solution with no success. All the houses from the bridge to light on both sides of High Street have an auto turnaround. My previous next store neighbor turned his whole front yard into a turnaround and parking area. Sacrificing the front yard of our house, one of Exeter's oldest historic houses, would create an unsightly eyesore. The fast-moving three lanes of traffic at the busiest intersection in Exeter in front of our house may backing out of our drive very risky. Please help me to find a solution to the problem. Thank you.
I know you're, you're working on this, and I don't know if you have a solution, you need a three-point turning situation somehow, whatever.
Sure understand what you're doing.
Mark, tell us where you are with this?
Sure, so, we just talked tonight, we're going to meet on-site Tuesday with John, myself, and Corey, and, and look on-site, we are, I think, is this, oh, back one? Is it right here?
Yep.
So, I mean, what we had proposed is to really to look, as, as the part of the lot line adjustment is to, is to transfer six to eight to 10 feet?
10-foot strip, right?
10-foot strip right here to John, and so, this part, what we thought we could do is do, there's asphalt here at the end, is to try to work a turnaround, or at least to be able to come in back out, and then a three-point turn, I think somebody just mentioned. So, we felt we could do this, I know John has concerns with that, so we're going to walk the site to see.
Okay.
John has suggested another idea that, again, we'll, we'll look to see if it's feasible, so we have two options I think we'll, we'll discuss on, on-site for Tuesday.
Thank you. Are there anybody else from the public which to speak at this time? No, saying none, then I'll close the public session, bring it back to the board. Any questions before we move ahead?
No, could I just see the aerial view again, is John's house, can I, can I see that from your aerial?
Uh, visit, you see.
Just to get a better visual of the area.
Corey, you have the aerial on this, on the slide deck?
Uh, there you go.
So, can you just?
This is John's house, it's right here.
Okay.
And so, this is his driveway, our property line right now goes actually right to the end of his driveway, and goes, kind of, it kind of goes at an angle, and so, we're going to basically string it out, and it's the 10-feet section that will be adjusted.
Thank you, it did help, thank you.
Yep, yep, and so, yeah, I mean, it just felt like it was, because it goes to his, you know, his driveway, and it's just a, it's not something, a piece of land that we need, so.
Okay.
Where's, where's the neighbor that took out the front yard?
I'm not sure.
I think he's talking about the store.
That's all I could think of, was maybe the store.
Yeah, I think that's what he's talking about.
I don't know, because that's been like, that's a year, it's a year, so.
Goes back 75 years, is what they say.
Yeah, I mean, Halsey's had it that way.
50 years.
Just one quick comment before we close, close the discussion, I, I did have the drainage study here, so I wanted to pull up what the existing conditions, 50-year storm event, I think we had looked at the, the, the post-development, the proposed project had 2.6 CFS going there, and the 50-year storm event for the pre-development is 5.6 CFS, so we're, not only are we significantly reducing what's going to that location, but then we're also taking it back and keeping it on-site and rerouting it, so, just wanted to make that note.
Thank you.
After I had time to kind of go through the numbers.
Thank you.
Everybody's all set with the traffic? Mr. Pennell's sitting here comfortably? Well, so, yes.
Corey, I have a question for you regarding impervious surface, did you calculate that? And I missed it?
Oh, yeah. It's, it's in here.
Right. Can you just, the real question I have, to keep it simple for you, is now and post-project, what is it now, and what will it be when you guys are done, if it goes online like you're proposing?
I believe now it's 18 and a half percent.
Okay.
And we're going to be at 25, 25, let me see here, I think it's on.
I think it's like C1, maybe?
On this sheet here.
That's easy looking at, but not.
On C2 dot 1, you have some calculations about what's required, you know, zoned and what's provided, but I don't see like, existing.
Existing site is 18 and a half percent impervious, proposed site is 27.6% impervious. Is what I.
Where are you?
Oh, I'm in my notes.
Building coverage is what we write. Yeah, no, I know, but drainage released.
No, I get it, but I'm saying that's what's on the plan.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, see, the C2 sheet is just the, the, the building.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I mean, you.
But that was in, it's in the, I believe in the, in the summary of the drainage study, and in the shoreline permit, applications also have those, those numbers as well.
I always wanted to point out that I thought you were well within.
Yeah.
The regulation on that.
Good, good to know. Okay, you want to deal with waiver motions? Can we get some more questions?
Yeah, do we?
Corey, could you give us, come again and review or give us the reasoning, you're on the great, the first one grading within five feet of the property waiver motion? Please?
I'm sorry, what was the question, or what is, what were you looking for? The first waiver, yes.
The criteria.
Is it in my waiver request, or do we have the, the five criteria, is it five criteria?
Yes.
Didn't you add one, Dan? Just kidding.
No, it was two.
There's the deep chart.
I know, but they're in here somewhere in the blinkety pack.
So, I think the waiver that we're about to talk about is, he got a variance for this at the zoning board already.
Okay, so this is, we have two waiver requests, waiver request one is section 9.3.6.4, work within five feet of the property line, the proposed, I don't know if we have to discuss what we're doing, we have work within the property line, we're putting in fences, we're doing the sidewalk. I don't have the, I guess I do in the zoning regulations.
Which we've been doing for a while, Corey, but I just, yeah, keep it simple, keep it simple.
I don't have the five criteria to, the list to, to address, so, you want to read the first, I guess?
You want to read it?
I, I don't have them written down to it.
The granting of the waiver will not be detrimental to the public's safety, health, welfare, or injuries to other property.
Correct, I, I'm, working within five feet of the property line, we're constructing fences, we're doing, providing sidewalk, I don't think that, that we're providing any detrimental effect to the, the public on that, health, safety-wise.
Conditions upon which the request for a waiver is based are unique to the property for which the waiver is sought and are not applicable generally to other property.
Again, the areas where we are working with, within five feet of the buffer, there's, there's pre-existing development within that area, we're providing a sidewalk, we're coming in off of the driveway that's right along the property line, and we're providing, we're providing a fence along the property line to work within five feet of the buffer, so I think the site conditions really dictate, you know, working within, within that five-foot area.
Because of the particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical, topographical conditions of the specific property involved, a particular hardship the owner would result as distinguished from mere inconvenience if the strict letter of these regulations are carried out.
Again, site topography, we're providing a fence along the property line, I think that's a sort of standard practice is to place those fences along the property line. The other work is within, within an existing developed area that we're working within the property line, so I think that would be a hardship if we were not allowed to get into that, that five-foot buffer area.
Okay.
Granting of the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations, and the intent of the regulations is actually, is usually, you know, hard to discern, but this has spelled right out the regulations that it's a, a smooth transition between properties, so you don't have, you know, a steep section cause erosion or other issues because of the change in grade, because it's not work within five feet of the property line, it's grading within five feet of the property line, so if you're not, if you're leaving the grade the same and putting in a fence, that doesn't trigger a waiver.
Right, and so.
To be clear, it's probably the sidewalk, it's not.
Yeah, so the sidewalk, again, we, we've matched the roadway, we've, we've designed the roadway and the grading to really match the existing property grades, you know, to the extent possible on, on the other side, so that we do have very minimal grading and a, and a smooth transition between the properties.
So, to be clear, the waiver is only for that section of where we bought the store next door, there's no other place within?
So, we do have, you know, again, we, we have it along this, this property line, and then on this property line, we're actually removing existing pavement, we'd be pulling the pavement out, and again, we're working with the abutter in that area, but we do have some work there. Again, we're gonna, we're removing pavement, but we're pretty much maintaining, you know, the existing grades to the extent possible, we're going to have a, a smooth transition within, within that area.
And nothing in the back end of the property?
No.
No, no, nothing back here, it's.
I think it's just the sidewalk, really, I don't, and then just around the corner, maybe 15, 20 feet, by the time it gets down to that little depression that we're talking about, it's well with a, you know, I don't see it very likely, very unlikely you'll get five feet final grading, so it's basically the sidewalk, yeah, and then to the extent what you do over Mr. Donald's.
Right, right, we're doing, we've, removing.
Some work right there.
You know, some very, very, again, very minor, we're, we're keeping, we're removing pavement in that area because we're taking out that curb cut, so there is going to be some slight grading, but it's, it's very minimal, and we'll be matching, you know, the surrounding grades to, to make smooth transitions through that area.
And finally, the waiver will not in any manner, in any manner vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance or master plan, and that's something I usually answer, and it does not, you know, the people that have asked for this waiver, there's nothing in the zoning ordinance about grading within five feet of the property line nor the master plan.
Okay. Any questions about that?
I, I have a question for David on this.
Okay.
David, Corey goes through that criteria in the application, I see a brief sentence on the two waiver requests, but he didn't address the criteria in the application, right?
They usually do a paragraph or two, if I remember this one right, I don't have it in front of me, I got it filed here, but.
Yeah.
They just usually do a bulk paragraph with their reasoning behind it, that they don't break out the criteria and list them, and then list their argument for each, they kind of do it in paragraph form.
Well, I think I've seen both, but I hear what he's saying.
No, I think, that's what they do.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what they do.
Yeah, so, I was just going to suggest, Corey, I know you've been here before.
Yeah.
We're going to put you through this, so it just makes your life a lot easier than tap dancing, if you have it in front of you already done, not, not trying to put you on the spot or make you, just trying to make your job easier going forward, because we, for, through some legal advice, as well as trying to improve our process, are going through these very specifically to make sure we're not being arbitrary, and it kind of keeps us on point as a board, and, and a lot of times will keep the public on, on-site, you know, with following what our job is and what we're actually voting on.
Yeah.
So, it's just something to think about in the future, plus it allows us to review your reasoning prior to the hearing. Thanks, just want to put that out there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Would you like to make a motion?
Unless people want to discuss it further.
Well, any discussion?
Just any, no.
Questions, comments? Pete, you all right?
It fits.
What'd he say?
He says it fits.
It fits, I can make a motion.
Okay.
All right, grading within five feet of the property line, waiver motion, after reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move that the request of Phillips Exeter Academy Planning Board Case Number 22 dash 2 for a waiver from section 9.3.6.4 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations Regarding Grading Within Five Feet of the Property Line Be Approved.
Second.
Good, second, thank you. Any discussion? Let's do it again.
Can we approve waivers with conditions?
Yes.
Yes.
That's not the motion.
Okay.
But you can discuss it.
Yeah, if, if I were to make the motion, I think I might put the condition that that, that depressed area that we were looking at, just get another look, because that is, I don't think it's technically five feet of the property line, but it looks like it's pretty darn close, and just.
We can do that as a condition, a different condition, you know what I mean?
Do it as a condition of approval.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Let's do that.
Don't forget it.
Come on.
I know you.
We can do that.
Let's amend the motion then.
Well, I think we're going to put, keep it off of the waiver, and use it as a condition of potentially approval, conditional approval.
Okay, so you're not going to do approve with conditions?
Not this waiver, this waiver, I've made a motion to approve.
That's fine.
Unless you guys defeat my motion, my motion is to approve the waiver request.
Okay.
With no conditions. It's been seconded.
Who's been seconded? Any other discussion?
Or not.
Then, Gwen, we're going to do a hand vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Seven zip, so it's like.
Do you cheat sheet?
I have the section 13.7 waivers now, so waiver request number two, section 9.3.4 FC2, to use fertilizer during plant establishment period, so per, a waiver is requested for use of fertilizer during plant establishment period per section, that 9.3.4 FC2, as outlined in the regulations, to request the waiver for that, of the Stormwater Management Standards, best management practices shall apply fertilizer, shall have a minimum 50% slow-release nitrogen, and fertilizer shall be for a maximum period of one year, so that's the request. Granting of the waiver will not be detrimental to the public's safety, health, and welfare or interest to other property, I think that, you know, use of, this is a standard practice, it's outlined in the, the town guidelines, we're going to be using 50% slow-release nitrogen as, as indicated, and it's only for a one-year period, so I don't believe that that will be detrimental to the public's safety, health, or welfare section, the second condition is the conditions upon which the requests for a waiver are based unique property for which the waiver is sought and are not applicable generally to other property. Again, this waiver is to use fertilizer during the plant establishment period. I don't know if this one applies to the project, but I don't think it's, again, I, I think there's, there's no, unique to the property for which the waiver is sought are not applicable generally to other property. So I'm not sure how this is typically addressed, but I don't, I think, you know, use of fertilizer during the plant establishment period. It's outlined within Section 9.3.4 to request for that. Just, you know, it's going to, it's really to help get, you know, plant establishment. This is a stormwater. You know, you don't want to be sending site runoff to your post-development, you know, to your rain gardens before you have your site, you know, your grass is established. So this is gonna help in that process. It's going to help to establish the, the planting on the site and then I think be beneficial, again, just for that one-year period. Third condition, because of the particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical conditions of the specific property involved, a particular hardship to the owner would result as distinguished from the mere inconvenience if strict letter of these regulations are carried out. Again, if the strict regulations of these conditions are carried out, I think you run the possibility of not having plant establishment during that first-year period and having a detrimental effect to your stormwater practices that have been installed for the project. So I think it's a benefit. It would be a hardship if, if you're not allowing the owner to, to get those plants established within that first-year period of the project. The granting of the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. I just clearly outlined within the regulations that this is a, you know, something that should be requested from, from, from the board. So I don't think it's contrary to any of the spirit of the regulations and it's really helping to, to establish the, the planting on site. And then lastly, I think Dave said he typically addresses, but I would not guess that it's, varies from the provisions of the zoning ordinance or master plan.
Okay. Any questions on that one? Any discussion?
Can we add a condition that they use the fertilizer, the 50%?
It is, we will be using 50% slow release nitrogen.
Can we add that as a condition so we're sure that's what gets used or is that?
You can do that when you make the motion.
It's in the regulations, it's in the regulations that we have to, so it will be-
All right, that's why I'm asking the question.
Good question.
But it, the waiver request, as Dave wrote, it doesn't specifically say for one year.
Yeah.
But that needs to be added. But that's not, that's us. It's not a condition, we just change what you say, right?
Well, the regs, you can't give one that can exceed a year.
You can't?
You can't what?
It's just a year.
Provided for temporary allowance, not to exceed one year.
Okay. Thank you. Then we don't need to.
You can put it as.
We don't have to.
You don't have to.
Okay.
You can put in a less amount of it, you know?
Gwen, you're thinking?
Yeah, I just, I'm thinking about Robin's comments earlier and it was, I was on the Clean Water, Clean Water Committee back when we did the regulations and we worked a lot with Mark and the Academy on this. But that was a few years ago and I just, I'm not, I'm not up to date on what's happened in, in this whole field. I don't know if there are some other options that may be even greener than what we've, than what we talked about and, and what we formed our regulation around. So I, I don't know what order to do this in. I, I would love it if you would follow up on Robin's suggestion to talk to some people who are maybe more in the know than, certainly than I am at this point. And I, I don't know how to, I don't know how to fit that into this waiver.
Our Sustainability Committee, we actually just texted in a note widely talking, or Melissa Paley at Escanacall Water Keepers, who has briefed some of our boards in town on this particular issue of nitrogen in the river and the condition of our estuary. So she, I know when she did brief that I went to for the River Committee once, a couple of years ago. So, I mean, we do have assets that I can connect.
Plants will grow without fertilizer.
They will.
Even from the beginning.
They will.
Weeds will do a great job.
That is something, you know, that, the level of hardship of not granting it is minimal, in my humble opinion. But I would also say that it's a temporary waiver in the bigger picture, but if you're really trying to be aggressive about reducing the nitrogen going into the water supply, you know, you really look hard at these waivers, right?
And it really is a big issue in our area with our estuary and our river.
It is.
And the biggest issue, Melissa has the pie charts that can break out where the problems come from and nitrogen is, you have to fertilize.
It's everywhere.
That's, that's the big one. So it seems like we keep granting waivers because, well, it's 50%. It's only for a year. It's only for the athletic bills. It's only for this. But at some point, when do we stand and say, hey, we wrote the regulations for a reason? And it matters to the quality of everyone's lives and maybe we talk to the people who do this for a living and say, let's make sure there's no other alternatives before we just, you know, overstand.
I, I think it's important to remember that the, this project has a very robust stormwater management plan, so all of the runoff, so the water gets to, the fertilizer gets to the river when it gets not absorbed by the plants and is caught up in the runoff and flows into the river.
Yes.
None of the water falling in the site, with the exception maybe of that corner. Well, that won't go to the river anyway. I'm just kidding. Is, is leaving the site without being treated. So the treatment will take all of the nutrients out of it.
I mean, it will help, but, I mean, we are right on a river, on a major estuary that is not helping. So I kind of feel like, and my son went to PEA for four years. I know there's a lot of pride at PEA for, yeah, we're doing the environmental, the sustainability and all that, and there's a lot of resources. So it just seems like, maybe we ask the questions of the local experts first, I guess is what I would suggest and just see. And if they say, no, we can't come up with any better solutions, then maybe that's, maybe we can.
I think we understand it's important to get the grass established.
Right.
As soon as the better, so to speak.
Yeah.
May I, for a second? I want to be clear on this because you said something earlier. You said you're meeting the 50% nitrogen, fertilizer must contain a minimum of 50% slow release nitrogen. Are you checking that box?
Yes.
Okay. Are you checking the box that the, is it phosphate free?
Phosphorus.
Phosphorus free?
Phosphorus free, 50%.
And the application rates, now we're seeing a half pound total nitrogen per thousand square feet?
Is that in the regs? I didn't write that in the, in our application, but we would have to meet, we'll meet all those, those regs.
Okay. If you're meeting all these regs, this is where I'm going. You're meeting all these regs and I don't see that you're within 100 feet of the water body. I see the only areas, show me where this is going to apply. You're outside of the 100 foot buffer, right? Between the 100 foot buffer and the edge of the district, which is 300 here?
So let me just go to the-
Show where you're applying the fertilizer.
Grading plan. Really, so, yeah, so this, God, there's so many lines on here.
It's your plan. That's what we're supposed to say.
This is the 100 foot buffer line here, really. This, so this is the 100 foot buffer. So really, our grading, we're not touching, you know, we're, we're in, you know, our, our grassed areas are, you know, primarily up here. We have grassed areas here, but really, this is the 150 right here. This is the 100 here.
You're using fertilizer.
Yeah.
But the regulations, you don't need a waiver for what you're saying you're doing.
Because it's out of the-
Because the waiver waives the requirement of 50% slow nitrogen release.
Ah.
And the phosphorus. If you're meeting all those criteria, then why are you asking for a waiver?
Because we were told to ask for a waiver during technical review by, by-
Oh, okay.
So I, I thought that we were required to.
Because restrictions are established in new landscaping. With the section, with the exception of 12BI, which is follows best management practices, above restrictions 12A and 12B above may be waived by the board or their designated. And you just told me you're outside of 100 feet and you meet, which is 12A. And 12B is all the ones you just said you need. So I'm, I, this might be a conversation we don't even need to get out.
Oh, that'd be nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not tonight's conversation.
It's usually if you're going to put it and you're not gonna meet these minimum requirements of 50% slow release, no phosphates, and you want to use something that doesn't meet these requirements, that's when it triggers the waiver.
Okay.
So are you using, the question is, are you using any fertilizer that 100 feet? And that's what you would need a waiver for?
I, I don't see that. I don't see, I don't see within 100 feet, 100 feet of the shoreline.
Yeah, that's prohibited anyway. You didn't, you can't even get away. So, no.
So, yeah, so I, I mean, I'm looking at our response to note, comment number six from the, during the, from the Natural Resource Planner comments, says, first, indicate, the seed spec indicates a 12 pounds per 10, per 1,000 square foot.
That's what you're not, that's what you're-
If this amount is necessary, the purpose of establishing new vegetation, you need to seek a waiver from the planning board. So that was-
But you just told me a second ago that you're not, you're not exceeding half pound total nitrogen per thousand square feet. I guess if you're not, I'm sorry, you know, but if, if you're not meeting that, then you do need a waiver. And after you need a waiver from, it's limited to that section above the application rate.
Okay. So I think that what the, what was in the Landscape Architect had provided in a, in their notes were, was the 12 pounds per 10, per 1,000 square foot, so.
Then that would require, so that-
That would be the, that would be the, that is why we are requesting-
And Kristen Otto says it's 300 feet.
No, it's, it's, yes, it is. The district is 300 feet. But our regulations say fertilizer may not be applied within 100 feet. Between 100 feet and the shoreline of all regulated water bodies to the extent of the district, which in this river is 300 feet. It varies depending on the water body.
Okay.
But in this one, it's 300 feet. So if you're putting something within 100 feet and 300 feet, you can apply fertilizer if it meets B, little i through four. And you don't need a waiver. But if you deviate from 12, any of the requirements in 12-
That's not what she told him.
No, she did. She, she just said-
Number three, Conservation Commission conditions, applicant will have to seek a waiver for the use of fertilizer to establish plantings in this 300 foot buffer, no fertilizers are allowed.
Well, okay, well.
I just, it's really confusing for an applicant.
It, it was a bit confusing and we thought that we needed the waiver. I think we've just discussed, we can, we can meet that requirement of the application rate and therefore no waiver is needed for the plant establishment period, as long as we're meeting those guidelines and we're outside of the 100 foot buffer. If that's my-
I can memorialize that.
Okay.
Do.
That was fun.
Yeah.
So then you are requesting to, or indicating you'd like to withdraw their Shoreland Protection District fertilizer?
Waiver. We'll, we'll meet the regulations.
We'll meet the regulations.
Meet the regulations.
That is, as long as we're allowed to still, we can use a fertilizer at that application rate and the 50% slow release outside of the 100 foot buffer area. So, which is basically all of our plant establishment area, so.
Well, you, so you do have the shrubs on the slope.
Uh, well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't use any, we wouldn't use any fertilizer in those, to establish those. We just, nothing, none of the, the-
He just said he'd meet the regulations, so.
Yeah.
We don't need to continue this conversation.
Yeah. We won't use fertilizer to do the-
He doesn't meet the regs and doesn't-
Okay, it's just, I just wanted to confirm that we weren't forgetting about that area, that's all.
Yep. So.
We're moved.
Okay.
So we're moved. It's another 20 minutes of your life, you'll never get back.
All right.
You got that, David? Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
Then, then I think we move to the lot line adjustment motion. And could you describe that to us? We got hung up on fertilizer. Where's the line? What lines are being adjusted?
So, I'm gonna go back to this. This is the existing lots. And this large parcel, it's close to 400 acres, is part of the, is one of the lots and then the other two lots are located up on High Street, which I'm going to now. These are the other two, two lots. This lot and this lot here, what we're, this lot, this portion is currently part of that larger 400 acre lot. So we're really proposing to merge these two lots and then this piece of the larger lot into a single lot for the development site. We're also proposing, this red piece over here is the 10 foot sliver, whatever, piece that abuts 25 high and this piece will be deeded to 25 High Street. So that will also, as we had discussed, provide a little bit of extra area for him to do some driveway and try to get a, a little bit more, a little bit better access and, and turn around to get onto High Street. So we're deeding a 10 foot strip of land to 25 High Street. And then, other than that, the, the, the two lots and a portion of the third being merged into a single, a single lot.
So you're eliminating two lots and making, adding it to the larger lot.
No, there's some, the kind of, no, it's going from two to one because that, that blue thing is gonna be a new lot.
The blue is the final new lot.
New lot. From two down to one.
Right, yes, yeah, right.
It's not really merging to the 400 acres, it's two down to one. The lot of your land mass came from the 400 acres.
Right, yes. Currently, there's three lots, there's gonna be two in the end.
Yeah.
So we're removing some property lines and then adding a couple of new ones because of the 10 foot.
Right. The new, the new property line will be this, this piece right here.
Yes.
And this piece right here. So it's just really creating-
Okay.
And creating more conforming situations with zoning because one of the lots doesn't have frontage. Large lots still has like thousands of feet of frontage on great water.
Yes.
So are we all clear on the subject? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, John.
I move that the request of Phillips Exeter Academy Planning Board Case Number 22-2, the lot line adjustment approval be approved.
Can I add a couple of conditions?
Yes, you may.
For six, John, a couple. The standard lot line adjustment conditions. One, a DWG file of the plan shall be provided to the town planner showing all property lines of monumentation prior to signing the final plans. This plan must be in NAD 1983 State Plan, New Hampshire, FIP S28034, and all monumentation, all monumentations shall be set according to Section 9425 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations prior to signing the final plan.
So John, you're-
That's my motion.
Your motion is approved, approved with those following conditions?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion?
We're mental, sir.
Okay. So Nancy, let's start with you. Hand vote, please.
Aye.
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 Inadvisable, that passes. Thank you very much. Condition use permit, shoreland motion. So Cory, tell us a little bit about this request.
So, um.
Please.
As indicated, um, the shoreland, we go to shoreland, uh, Exeter Shoreland District is a, um, 300 foot buffer from the Exeter River. That, um, so any work within the shoreland buffer requires a conditional use permit. This line here is the existing 300 foot offset from the Exeter River. Just highlighted one is the 150. Um, DES has a 250 shoreland buffer requirement. We've, um, have a DES shoreline permit, uh, application as well. Uh, we did meet with the conservation commission, uh, on the application regarding the shoreland, um, conditional use permit. And we received recommendation for approval with, uh, I believe it was four conditions that we have addressed in the revised plans and application. I have within the conditional use permit application, I did create an attachment A, and in this attachment, I did address all of the criteria for, um, that a conditional use permit must meet in order to be approved. And again, there's, there's five criteria. Um, and if you want, I will read through those. They are in the application, but I can read through those now if you'd like.
We had those last time. Are we comfortable with those? Would you like to have him read those with us?
I'm fine.
You're fine? You're fine? Yep. We're okay.
You're okay? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We think we are.
We think we are. So one of the, um, I think one of the primary concerns or, or comments from the conservation commission and some of the comments that were just discussed here tonight were the, um, recommendation to really, and we, I think we discussed it at our last meeting as well, to, um, do what, do maximize the nitrogen phosphorus removal for the site. So we went back and, um, went through some of the, uh, BMPs, some of the UNH's, um, uh, guidelines and their, um, different best management practices for looking at what had highest, the highest nitrogen and phosphorus removal rates. So we've revised, we revised the plans and we're, we've, we're now doing a, um, it's called a internal storage reservoir rain garden that is similar to a gravel wetland. They had mentioned use, you know, looking at the option of using gravel wetlands. This option, uh, we feel actually has higher, um, nitrogen and phosphorus removal rates and still allows for a, a planted surface. So it has that 18 inches of filter media that the water goes through and then gets into a, um, stone reservoir underneath that has a filter, has an permeable layer that creates it, creates a, uh, flow path for the water to kind of get around and have to get back under, traveling through that, that gravel. So that was one of the, the, um, you know, one of the design changes that we did to try to meet, uh, some of the recommendations from the conservation commission and address nitrogen and phosphorus removal for the site. So basically, all of the water, stormwater coming from the site that we're collecting is coming in and going through that, that stormwater practice. So.
Okay. Any questions on that at all? Are we ready for a motion? Do we have to, are there other criteria we need to look at?
I think, I guess Dave, my question is the, uh, the landscaping stuff that goes on the final multi-family site, that's on the site plan, right?
Yeah.
More, yeah.
Yeah.
Gwen, you look like you need to read a little bit.
I do.
You should.
I don't know how to take that. All right. After reviewing the criteria for a shoreland conditional use permit, I move at the request of Phillips Exeter Academy, planning board case number 22 dash two, for a conditional use permit be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? Gwen, let's start with you. Hand vote, please.
Aye.
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 Inadvisable. Okay. Passes. Now, multifamily site plan motion.
It's not really him. That's us, right? At this point?
That's us.
That's his applicant.
This is the final motion, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
And Dave has some conditions.
Well, I do. Would you like me to read?
Would you share those with us, please?
Yes, at this point.
Sure. Uh, seven, the seven standard conditions, which I've read many times, but I will read again. One, molecular, as the plan with details acceptable to the town shall be provided prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. This plan must be in DWG or DFX file format and in NAD 1983 State Plan New Hampshire FIP S28 under 34 minutes. Two, pre-construction meeting shall be arranged by the applicant and is contracted with the town engineer prior to any site work commencing. The following must be submitted for review and approval prior to the pre-construction meeting. The SWIP or Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, if applicable, be submitted to and reviewed for approval by DPW and a project schedule and construction cost estimate. Three, third-party construction inspection fees shall be paid prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting. Four, stormwater system operation and maintenance report and the stormwater management inspection and maintenance manual shall be completed and submitted to the town engineer annually on or before January 31st. This requirement shall be an ongoing condition of approval. Five, all applicable state permit approval numbers shall be noted on the final plans. All appropriate fees to be paid, including but not limited to sewer water connection fees, impact fees, and inspection fees, including third-party inspections prior to the issuance of a building permit or a certificate of occupancy, whichever is applicable is determined by the town. Six, all, all landscaping shoreline plans shall be maintained. Any dead and dying vegetation shall be replaced no later than the following growing season as long as the site plan remains valid. This condition is not intended to circumvent the revocation procedures set forth in state statutes. Seven, if determined applicable by the Exeter Department of Public Works, the applicant shall submit the land use and stormwater management information about the project using the PTAP online municipal tracking tool. PTAP's method must be accepted by DPW prior to the pre-construction. So this seven, what I did hear, I don't know who's going to make the motion, but I have some suggest, I heard, review of the final plans on the drainage area. Uh, I've heard the landscaping. I'll, I'll just read those four and then whoever makes the motion can decide if they want to be included. But they were not, I, I took them kind of from what the, you know, different plan board members said. So A would be UEI or Underwater Engineers, Inc., will review the final plans to determine that the drainage area in the most eastern northeast corner of the site will function as designed. Nine, the final landscape plan shall show the additional plannings as agreed by the owners and as stated by the applicant. Nine, final plan shall show a solution to John Donald's turnaround issue, issue outlined in the Mr. Donald's letter dated May 12th, 2022 and submitted to the planning board. And 10, final landscape plan shall show a note that the use of fertilizers shall meet the requirements of 9.3, 0.4, 0.12, 0.8, and 0.11.
I think you had two nines.
I do too, yeah.
I did not. Oh, okay. Well, 10 and 11. Uh, but I do want to say, I, I brought that one up with Mr. Donald because I heard, I want to be clear that PEA is agreement to that because, uh, you know, there's some private property rights here that we're kind of, you know, discussing. So I just wanted, I mean, his intention was, but can you, I mean, I don't want to put that on unless, you know, they agree to, you know, work with him on a solution.
We, I mean, I would say we agreed to work with him on a solution, but can you read that, that one condition back?
Yeah. No, it says, show a solution to John Donald's turnaround issue. You know, that was a tough one because if he can't turn around, that is a bad situation. And I know he turns around now, but he probably uses your property to do so without an easement. However, he's been there 50 years. I'm not an attorney. I don't want to get into ad first possession claims, but I think it's a fair discussion that we can have right now and figure out how is he going to be able to turn around and develop because that is a bad drive.
No, I understand that. But I mean, you know, that, the academy's been there for 200 years, right? So the, I think that the turnaround, we can come up, we can propose a solution. I just, I just want to make sure that what we propose and what we feel like will work. Mr. Donald may not agree with that. So, I mean, that's why I want to be clear that we could, we, we feel like that we have, or, I mean, we're, we're giving John 10 feet of property.
And I don't believe the way I've worded this says he needs to agree.
That's fine.
I think it's, it's a solution to his issue that he needs to be provided a turn.
Yeah. I, I mean, he has a, yes.
I mean, and that's, I think that's something you can prove with it, you know, Cory can prove that with a little tent and a turning radius for a cop.
I, so if we could, I mean, I would say that if we could, we could provide a turnaround on his, on his property. Um, I'm not going to say.
Can I help you one sec? What's the 10, you're going 10 feet into your property, Mark? Right? You're giving him 10 more feet. You're moving your boundary 10 feet into your lot. 10 feet.
Yes.
All he needs is a turn, three-point turnaround.
Yeah.
It's a three-point.
The existing conditions, when you go out there.
Yeah.
It's probably in 35 feet maybe of pavement right there at least.
Well, you count the two, his driveway and our driveway.
Yeah, at least.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right? That, all that curb cut of Old Gilman Lane is going away in the plans.
Understood.
And leaving him with his drive. And you add 10 feet. That's, that's, I don't.
It's not the one.
He used to have luxury of backing up, swinging into Gilman Lane and swinging all the way around and going out.
He doesn't own it.
Right.
True, but okay.
I understand what you're saying about ad first possession and he probably has a potential claim there.
Yeah.
Because if you've owned it for all that time and he's been using it all that time, open, notorious contiguous.
No, I get it.
He probably has a claim.
No, I know.
But does he have a claim for the whole thing or an easement? So if they're, they're trying to solve it.
Yeah, we can stay away from it. That's why I got this condition. Usually I stay away and I say, okay, but this, this one's.
Well, we need to do, we have to do something, Peter. We can't just ignore it and not have it a condition. We, I mean, we, I have good faith. I think you guys will solve it. But if they're looking for an approval, we should try to tell them what meets our criteria of solving it, I think. I don't like it when we have arbitrary stuff like that after an approval.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's really loose end stuff that I don't like.
Something measurable.
Right. So if these guys do X, then they're all set with us.
Well, I mean.
Mark's got.
Advocate to work with Mr. O'Donnell for a solution to the turnaround issue outlined in his letter dated May 12th and submitted to the plan.
But the story's a base.
Really vague.
Yeah.
Do you have a solution in mind now? Is it?
We do have a solution in mind. I just, I just don't think that.
You don't necessarily accept it?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, so, so I'm not going to, I don't want to speak for John. He's very, he's worked with us really well. You know, what he would like to do is avoid pulling out into High Street.
You want to.
At all. And I don't know if we can accommodate that.
Right.
But he also said he had a potential solution. Do we know what that is?
I, I know what he has explained to me, what his potential solution is. I can explain that. I just, I don't want to speak for John on this topic. Um, but his solution means not driving out onto, not using his driveway as it is now going to High Street.
Dapping into yours.
He told me that. He wanted to do a bit. I cautioned him against doing that.
Yeah, that's not a good idea for him.
And then getting, accessing PEA land to access the lights. But a future owner, I mean, they don't want to give that easement in perpetuity, I wouldn't imagine.
Right.
And, and, and if he goes to sell it, a new owner wants a curb cut.
Right. That's the safest way to exit though. You know, go by the signal. Right.
But it's, right. But it's allowing somebody, a non-PA property owner.
The liability to them.
Yes. Right.
Yeah. I mean, not, it's not John. It's the next, it's the next owner that we would have to deal with.
You could probably give a life easement in the 10 feet if you were willing.
We've, we talked about that today. Dave helped us with that. I think that those are options we could talk about. You know, that's, that's just not something. And so fully agreeable with having a condition that we, that we discuss and, and propose a solution with, with John. I just want to be careful about what that solution is. And then also, I mean, we could propose a solution, but then it would be giving to John to, to make that, that correction. I mean.
Yeah.
We've offered, we've offered to, at the end of the driveway to work with him to create a turnaround on his, on, on the property that we're, that we're giving to him.
Yep.
Can it be more than 10 feet?
I mean, we can go right up to the property line.
What does that equal?
Uh, well, it's, well, it's about 10 feet.
Yeah, as you, as you, as you move, you can kind of see his, his driveway as you come down further, you get further away from the property line. So when you get right up on the, on the street, you're, you're right, you know, 10 feet. But you could, you know, right around the corner of the house, there's another, you know, two, two plus, you know, a couple of feet. So you might end up, end up with, you know, a turnaround that's, you know, another 12 feet, 12 foot in the driveway length, the driveway width. So you, you know, you have about a 20, 22, 20, I don't know if it's a 12 foot driveway, 10 foot driveway. But you end up with about 24 feet that you could back into and then, and then pull out.
Well, that works in winter with, I mean, is there a place for snow in winter?
So that's his, yeah, he has all this property, all this area, green area in here. Certainly, we, you know, we've looked at, there's, there's certainly the opportunity to have a, have a turnaround right here. The problem, I think his concern is that they have, often have more than multiple vehicles there that sort of stack this driveway. This is a, a great opportunity for a turnaround. You can park here, turn around and pull out. But with the number of vehicles that are there, sometimes that it's not. So, so there's certainly that opportunity. I mean, it's better than a lot of the, you probably know a lot of the other driveways that, that go down High Street.
Yeah.
But there is an opportunity there. Uh, it's just that, that the, um, the number of vehicles that are parked in that driveway often would block that and go, because they, they stack in that driveway.
Well, and you can see the driveway as it is right here, right? This is landscaped area. So, I mean, we're trying to work with him to avoid having to do any major changes there. But there's still, on his property, there's opportunities for him to do something different, to do that, right? So, I mean, we're fully, we agree, we'll work with him. I mean, we're giving him land to be able to have this flexibility. So, I mean, we will, we agree that we'll work with him to come up with a solution. I just, I just don't want this to be going back and forth that the only solution he accepts is this. And that's just not something that I don't think that we can, that the academy will want to.
So what is the purpose of that landmark going forward for you guys? Is this going to be lawn?
Uh, right here.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
So if you give him a little bit more land there, do you really lose anything utility wise?
No. No.
That is, so that.
We have an easement there.
Yeah, there is an easement. There's a.
We have an easement.
Town does?
Yeah.
For sewer?
Uh, it's a sewer easement, yes. So, but it's for structures though, I think. Yeah. So I mean.
Sewer reason 25 feet.
That would run with the land regardless of ownership though.
Correct.
So if ownership of some, if they gave him 15.
I wasn't talking about the grand thing.
Well, I'm just talking, I'm just talking aloud. I was just kind of throwing it out there. Cause I'd rather give you guys a done deal from our perspective. And I think, you know, if you can just be, if it doesn't take anything really away from you, other than obviously it's land, but if you don't think you're going to use it, probably you're using a, this is a pretty, um, you know, well-designed, intense project in a dense area. I don't think you're going to do much more with that. I don't think you're going to expand your building. You'd probably be trying to do it now.
Yeah, right here is the patio. But I mean, I think that, um, in here, I think the, I mean, so Eric, I think that there's, with what there's there, I think we could, we could do it with the, with the 10 feet that we're giving him. I really think.
You think so?
Yeah. I mean, I, I just don't, I mean, and what he just mentioned tonight, that his concern is, is driving out to High Street, which is the exact same concern, why we didn't want to do this.
I don't think it's reasonable for this planning board to have any impact on your need to give him ability to access, get out of his property without having to go onto High Street. That's where his frontage is. That's where his property's always been. And I don't, I don't think it's a, at all reasonable for this board to, it requires you to solve that issue.
No.
That's not up to us.
It's not our purview now. It's not, it's beyond our scope, right? So.
Yeah.
But if we can.
I, we don't, we want to be careful though here. We don't want to start down this road.
Don't do it then. Don't do it then.
It's, I, I, we set a precedent.
By doing what?
What? By, by attempting to.
Yeah, we can't solve that issue.
Yes. All right. But we should be clear.
Yeah.
Yeah. No.
But you've thrown out some potential solutions with additional land that would, would make it, you know, I mean, there are more things to think about. So it's not our decision, but I understand.
I just think it's hard to give, to, I just, I personally, I don't want to take all night on this. But to me, I don't like it when we vote on something and then say, find a solution.
Right.
I just think that's so vague and so open to interpretation that, um, you know, if I'm an applicant and I come out with that as my, condition of my approval, what does that even necessarily mean?
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I, I didn't, the way I wrote it, it doesn't say find. It just says work. No, I'm serious, that's what I do, like.
I understand, yeah, yeah.
And that's the way I wrote it. I wrote it like, okay, as long as there's an effort to work, whether, whether something comes out of it or not, doesn't matter, so, I suggest you have two options, one is the vague one, or the other one is don't even, don't even include it.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I usually don't bring these up, but this one was, you know, it was the same issue, you know, and the applicant brought it up saying, you know, said that he was going to work with him, so, I would, I would never, you know, suggest you have the authority to oppose this condition without the applicant suggesting it and agreeing to it.
Right.
I think that can be measured, that a good, a good effort, reasonable effort has been made to assist this abutter.
But should we like?
We'll have documentation of that.
To vote to ladies?
We're not saying it has to be on the plan, but we.
I think we know what their effort is.
Yeah, they're already.
It's ten feet, they told you what it's going to be.
They're already making.
It's ten feet.
I don't know, because they also said.
I mean, is it going to change, Mark, really?
And I would think if you have a meeting.
I think you guys have been upfront about it, really.
No, we're gonna, no, we're not going to cancel the meeting if there's not a condition on this.
No, I'm saying, your effort is going to be to give him ten feet of land, right?
Well, absolutely. I mean, that's part of what we're asking today, is to do, is to do this, right?
It's on his.
I guess I'm presuming that if there's a meeting, it's not, well, this is my offer, and this is my offer, and we take it or leave it, but there's some kind of negotiation there, which might be what you offered, or something that he's come up with, that, you know, I, I don't know.
I hear what you're saying, but the planning board doesn't really have.
Well, it's not our job to do that.
No, so I guess there's not much of a reason, I see, to table it for the board to come out and see what it is, because it's like, what are you going to do with it when you get it?
Basically, they're going to agree with something, or.
Yeah, you make it a condition vague, like, or not.
All right, so, they've already put on a plan that they're going to do ten feet, that's already on the plan that calls for presenting.
That's not.
So that's a done deal, so then just keep it vague. I could follow Dave's suggestion to keep it vague, unfortunately, it's definitely not what I prefer, but I'm going to take his advice.
Specifically vague?
Yes. Intentionally vague.
That's an old, that's an old administrative technique.
That's why I'm not an admin guy.
I'm working on it, I'm working on it. Okay, I think we're set there.
Are we, are we dealing with the, the front elevation of the house on High Street? That was another.
I didn't know how to believe that. I left this to whoever. I think there was a talk about six-inch rise right now to a foot, foot and a half, that's all I heard, but.
I think something needs to be.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly raise the grade around the front of the property by about a foot, which would bring it up eighteen inches from the sidewalk, sloping up to the building.
Raise the grade eighteen inches of the front of the house.
And, and that would reduce the reveal from down, you know, to about eighteen inches of reveal, which I think typically is a foot anyway, so we're right, we're right in that range, it's going to look, so.
Be better, I think.
We're, we're fine with, with adjusting the grade.
He's using that as a note, he wouldn't add that to the grain, drain plan, would you?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just wondering, final plan, show or?
Yeah, it'll be on the final, it'll be on the final.
You'll show it, actually?
We'll show a contour, or a spot grade in front of the building.
They did do it a few years ago, three and a half. So why not match that?
How did you just say it? You said it so bad, right, in the beginning, what were you going to do? You said, we can certainly, like, like what?
Um, raise the grading, raise the grade.
Eighteen grade, eighteen inches.
Raise the grade eighteen inches.
Eighteen inches, yeah, eighteen inches of.
It's on the video, two hours.
How do we, how do we identify that structure?
We already have six inches.
Yes.
The grade from the sidewalk to the face of the foundation is eighteen inches.
Why not, why not match the grade to the, the home next door that you're not tearing down? Match them.
It's pretty similar, I don't know what.
It's like a table, almost.
Exactly what the grades are in front of there, but, yeah.
Compatible with the neighborhood.
Is that just the one new structure on high, right?
Yes, that's the only one, correct.
Yes.
That's it. Okay. So I would say, final plan, show, raise in grade to about eighteen inches above the sidewalk, cause the new structure on High Street.
Similar, similar to the other structure on High Street.
And then add similar.
To whatever, whatever the address is, the house is, thirty-five?
High Street. That's number thirty-five? Yeah, thirty-five. So similar to number thirty-five, High Street.
All right, can you go through your added conditions, though?
One more time, slide in a motion, please.
Yeah, you and I will view the final plans to determine drainage area in the most eastern northeast corner of the site, function as designed, nine.
Hold on, Dave, hold on, please. I want to go through them one at a time, if we can, real quick. Do we really need that?
Um, I would like, I would like somebody to double-check the numbers, because I don't think that the two-inch, you know, the point one-five inch difference between the contour line and the rim elevation is correct. I don't, that, that doesn't, it seems like it's a typo, I don't know, I'd like somebody to double-check that number.
That's probably something that can be done in-house.
Probably.
Town of Exeter. You know what I mean?
Probably, yeah, I think.
We go through technical review.
Right, but I mean, Dave, is the, asking U E I to review that one thing like a huge ask? I mean, they're always reviewing other stuff.
No, I mean, I envision this as a phone call, a five-minute conversation with Allison, to be honest with you, then she pulls out the plans and electronically.
She's a U E I?
Yeah, she's a U E I. I, I don't envision this much heavy lifting, but, I mean, Genmates is gone now, though, so.
Yeah, you're kind of.
We only have an assistant town engineer that I used to do that stuff with.
Yeah. Okay.
I'd like to keep that.
Yeah, important, but that's just me.
Okay, thank you, next.
Next.
The final landscaping plan shall show the additional plantings as agreed by the abutter and as stated by the applicant. Reason why I put that one in there, he had made a statement that it was another landscaping plan, that he had agreed with, yeah, the abutter, doctors wanted about some plantings that we have not seen.
We're all good with that one?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's important.
Three?
Um, the applicant shall work on a solution to the turnaround issue outlined in Mr. O'Donnell's letter dated May 12th, 2022, and submit it to the planning board.
Yep.
Okay.
Final landscape plan shall note that the use of fertilizers shall meet the requirements of nine point three, point four, point F, point twelve, point A and B. Just simply stating that, you know, they don't need a waiver, they meet these requirements, so, the plans will note that. And then finally, the final plan shall show a raise in the grade to about eighteen inches above the sidewalk on the new structure on High Street, similar to thirty-five, High Street.
How's that?
Those all sound good, right?
Yeah, I think those.
Okay.
You're hired.
Thirty-five, High Street, as of today.
Wow.
Today.
So how many conditions did you have total?
Well, the seven I read, and the five additional ones.
Did I, did I move the request of, at the request of Phillips Exeter Academy, Planning Board Case 22-2, the multifamily site plan approval be approved with the twelve conditions outlined by the town planner?
Second.
Approved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, and let's start with Nancy, please.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now it's approved.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We didn't get any input from Steve, Hurnau.
Steve had an easy night.
Steve. Steve, I'm glad we didn't have any questions. I asked, I asked if I was happy.
Yeah, well, I said, no, no.
Okay, we're finished with that.
All right. Take that away here. A rubber band.
All right, next on the application, application of Rafferty Investment Group LLC for a minor subdivision of an existing seven-point-three acre parcel located at fifty-four Drinkwater Road into two residential lots, subsequent properties located in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, tax map parcel number six oh, one oh six dash one, and is planning case number twenty-two dash four. And Dave, you certainly have.
Yeah, first, I'd like to ask, is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Oh.
Nobody's putting.
I know why.
Step to the microphone.
Uh-oh.
Well, I, I had spoken with the applicant earlier, because I looked at the plans and, because I got back in the, I'm back in the office now, and he didn't, they didn't identify a protected seventy-five-foot well radius on the new lot, and it might even be tricky as to where it can fit on the lot, this planning board had been consistent about showing that seventy-five-foot well radius within the limits of the exist, you know, the created lot, and not, you know, going into the right-of-way or onto adjacent property. So I asked him to provide that information, and if he couldn't, I said, I do not think, I would not recommend that the planning board act on this application until they see that, but if you can get me a plan by seven, we can go ahead, if not, I'll ask the item to be tabled until the, what, May twenty-sixth meeting. And I haven't heard from them, I checked my, I don't think I checked, I checked my email about six fifty, so, I haven't gone there.
So we've never opened this, so we just don't open, no?
Well, I would, I would continue it, say you're going to continue it until the meeting, so we don't have to renotice it.
Yeah. I'll make that motion. Okay, and you said, twenty-second, Dave?
Twenty-sixth.
May twenty-sixth.
May twenty-sixth.
You'd continue the application until the May twenty-sixth, Planning Board meeting at seven p.m.
Yep.
Also move it.
So motions been made.
I'll second.
There's a second down there, thank you. Voice vote, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tensions? Carries. Moving right along. The application of Seneca Hopkus for a lot line adjustment of the common boundary line between the properties located at fourteen Riverbend Circle and one-ten Linden Street, properties located in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, tax map parcels number one oh four dash twenty-eight and one oh four dash seventy-six, Planning Board Case number twenty-two dash five. And Dave, you are again at the mic, you're ahead of me this time.
I will. The applicant submitted a lot line adjustment plan that's dated April twelfth, for your review. There was no TRC review, however, the materials had been reviewed by the Code Enforcement Officer Doug Eastman, and found them to be in compliance with the zoning regulations. The applicant did submit a request that has several waivers, but I've reviewed these, and they do not need any of them. They do need, they're at the discretion, the minor subdivision, if you read the minor subregs, it says, as deemed necessary by the town planner. I routinely do not require, you know, H I S surveys or topography, especially in this case, because I've talked to the owner, and the owner is, that is on Riverbend Circle, and there's about a ten-acre lot behind him, and he was in a abutter to the Patricia Ave, he came in and spoke to the board and so forth, and he saw an opportunity to purchase four acres of this lot, this is not the Patricia Ave lot, this is just south of it. Remember the extension of Patricia Ave with the, with the four, four units, well, and the five that was, one was existing? And this gentleman got the opportunity to, to buy this land, he has no intention of doing anything on it, anything he does do on it, if he's building, needs to follow any types of permits and requirements, but he bought it more for, he's buying it more for a buffer. So basically, what it does is reduce, so I wouldn't ask for any of that information anyways, that they're requesting a waiver from, so, I don't see, I don't see the need for any of these waivers. So I would just say it's a pretty simple lot line adjustment plan, making one lot on Riverbend Circle, adding four acres, and, and reducing a ten-acre site that fronts on Linden Street down to six, or six point six-one, to be exact.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Should we open this?
We can, I just thought I'd see if the board had any questions first. Not seeing any right now, is anybody in the public that would like to speak to this particular application? If so, please step to the microphone, introduce yourself, so our viewers at home will know who's speaking. Sir?
And we will, too.
And we will, too, yes.
Good evening, I'm Seneca Hopkus, fourteen Riverbend Circle, I am the applicant. I'm just here to answer any questions. Dave outlined all of it, the purpose of this is purely conservation, with all of the, the removal of the trees and all of the stuff that's happened up above us, we were given an opportunity to, to purchase this piece of land, which abuts the conservation land by the river below us, and provides us an opportunity to never have to worry about that same kind of thing happening directly behind our house. So we took that opportunity to buy it, and we'd like to put in the lot line adjustment to make it our property.
Thank you.
We have no plan to ever build or develop it.
So there's an old, old saying in real estate, if you don't own the view, you can't guarantee the view.
Right.
So he's trying to guarantee the view, I think.
Yeah.
Unless you buy the view.
That is very accurate.
Right?
Exactly what he's doing.
We've explained that before, years ago. Sir, if you owned the land, you wouldn't have those questions.
I like that one, man, that's well worded. I see no issues with this, this is about as straightforward as it gets, guys.
Yeah, yeah, I would say so.
I do have two suggestive conditions of approval of the boards at that point.
Okay.
Have we opened this?
No, we haven't opened it yet.
Oh, dear.
That's what I wondered.
I'm just wondering why we keep going on and talking about it.
After nine o'clock.
I haven't opened it.
Would you like to open the case?
I will move it.
Okay, and it's ready for, should we rehearse, Dave, is that correct? Is that correct?
It is.
Okay, I look for motion. I mean, we have a motion, we need a second here.
Oh, I'll second.
Second, okay. Those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we're illegal.
Everything you just said is put into the record.
Yes, right.
Yeah.
Metroactively.
Yes, yeah.
You can do that.
We approach this case in a unique fashion.
What do you got, Dave?
D W G file, the plans shall be provided to the town planner showing all property lines of monumentation prior to signing the final plans. This plan must be in M A B 19X, State Plane, New Hampshire, F I P S, 2,800 feet coordinates. And two, all monumentations shall be set in accordance with Section 9.25 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations Prior to Signing the Final Plan.
Do you want a motion?
Sure.
I move that the request of Seneca Hopkus, Planning Board Case Number 22-5, for a lot line adjustment be approved with the following, with the conditions outlined by Dave. I'll second.
You'll second it? In the discretion?
Sounds like you have my last name wrong. Does that matter?
How do you spell it?
It's Hipkis.
Hip, oh, hip, I said Hopkus, I'm sorry.
I believe another gentleman said Hipkis.
That was my mistake, it's right here.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay, well, hand vote, so, how are you gonna vote, please?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Consensus. Consensus. Enamnis, right? Enamnis. Okay.
I love the email, man.
Okay, other business. Friends of Coastal Waters. Oops.
Oops.
Oh, here. I'm not quite ready.
Our planner's not ready.
Got my nose on.
Did you look at this?
What is that?
We get this email today.
Was that on here?
They wanted to turn the old Tyco.
Yeah, what building?
It's not on the agenda.
Looks like it's not on this.
No, it's not on here.
But I didn't see that.
This, this is apparently the old Tyco building.
That's what I saw. There's more to it.
This is like the, what they're doing is voting to turn it into a school. I don't know who regulates these things. It's just like the old office building.
Reef reset. Talk amongst yourselves.
Okay. Now, bring the meeting back to order, please. And we are talking about the Friends of Coastal Waters. Charter stolen Holland Way.
Me?
Could you step to the microphone, please?
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna stay there.
Who are you again? Why are you here?
I was just gonna bring it back, so. Okay, Friends of Coastal Waters is a charter school. They approached the town about going in on Holland Way, on an existing building out on Holland Way. And they discovered that this, you know, they sent the letter, the letter's, you know, not gonna belabor the whole letter, but they are governed by 674-54 governmental land uses in our statutes, which are exempt from our land use regulations. However, if it's a substantial new use or a substantial change of use.
Yes.
Which I do believe this is.
Yes.
Because it's, I don't know, engineering office for, you know, and they're, they're moving in, so it's a school.
It's a corporate.
Then what they are required to do is send plans and specs to the governing body and the planning board of the municipality, if one exists, which we do. And either body can choose to have a hearing within 30 days of receipt of the plans and specs from, from the folks, well, in this case, Friends of Coastal Waters. And you can choose to have a hearing and at which you can provide comments and even a written, you know, letter, but they are, they will be non-binding. You have no authority to require them to do anything.
Go to sleep.
But, yeah, kind of, just, you know, you can have a hearing if you so choose. In this case, they are moving into the existing building. I talked with them. They do not have any plans of making any modifications to the exterior whatsoever. And they have some plans that they submitted about moving walls around to create, you know, a different interior space. But they are not suggesting any changes to the exterior, parking, access, et cetera.
Which side of the Holland Way is that structure as you're going from?
It's on your right. If you're coming from Hampton Road, coming from Hampton Road. You come around Hampton Road, you go on, it's your first, it's your first entrance on the right.
There's a helo pad over there, isn't there?
I don't know if there's a helo pad, but.
Yeah, the old Tyco.
Is this Tyco's original building?
Yes, correct.
The Tyco building.
Yes, the Tyco building, yes.
I don't know if Tyco was ever there, but I guess so.
Yeah, I guess that's where they started, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's what, are we having discussions as to whether we'd like to have them come or are we just?
Yeah, you have the option, not the obligation, to hold a hearing within 30 days if you so choose and issue any non-binding comments you might have. So that's why I'm bringing it to you.
When does that 30 days start? Has it started?
Yes, you received it today. So it would either be on the May 26th or the June 9th meeting.
Okay. This is what I kinda call a, like, courtesy call, like when the town comes in with something or the school district or the state. The state came us in on Epping Road when they did the salt shed years ago. And the school came in when they were trying to figure out where to put the trailers out behind the ju, in front of the junior high school is what they were proposing and we suggested they look out back. And in both cases, they accepted our suggestions. So they're non-binding, but I think it, I think it's a worthy activity for us and for the applicant.
But you're not saying they're asking for anything yet?
No.
They're not asking anything. No. And I don't think they will be.
This is a change of use, so it triggers the right for us to.
No, I understand that, but I'm just, if we bought it, let it in, but if they, when they need to ask for something, they're gonna have to come for us, to us. Is that never? They can do what they want?
If they change the building.
Local land use regulations they are exempt from. So they will not have, they will never trigger site plan approval, they will never, no, 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 and even, yeah.
And they own that whole trial.
They own that business, I tell ya.
Correct.
So there's plenty of room for expansion.
Correct.
And we won't have anything to say on that?
No.
Correct.
Well, no, I say no. They will submit the plans and specs and then you have an opportunity to hold a hearing within 30 days. They have to submit it 60 days prior to construction. You can hold a hearing and issue non-binding comments. That's what you can do.
Yeah.
So we can make them come see us again if they do something outside?
A substantial new use or a substantial change of use, so that's, if they, if they do some exterior, say they have some stacking problems.
Yeah.
You know, school, that's about one thing that, you know, asks, you know, everybody comes and, you know, drops off their kids at 8:00 a.m. and it causes a temporary, you know, traffic issue.
Yep.
If they wanna solve it by putting in a, you know, in a roundabout or a buses-only lane, you know, or some, you know, some, some wider lanes to stack, that probably to me wouldn't trigger a substantial new use or a substantial change in use, so you wouldn't even get plans and specs on that.
But if they tinker with outside?
No.
Well, maybe if they changed the parking around.
Yeah, that's not, I mean, I wouldn't see that as a substantial change of use or a substantial new use, would you? Maybe. I'd have to see each proposal, but, but usually, like, the Main Street School came in, they added an addition, that's, the use is a school now, the use is staying a school. It's not a change of use, it's not a substantial new use, so they didn't come at all to the planning.
I think Main Street School came in and we were, didn't we talk about?
The one before it.
Oh, okay.
The one before it did, and then they came in, because before it was required. The town required people to come. And when I got here, I was like, under what authority? I'll follow 674-54 governmental land uses and they'll just follow what the rules are.
Yeah.
That's what's going on now.
They're gonna have to be in pretty quick to add on to this building or build another part.
They're not gonna add on.
The high, the high school portion of the building's all in one room.
Yeah.
I think the lot.
They're not doing any exterior, as they say in their letter. I mean.
I know they say that, but at some point in the not-too-distant future, I would think they'd have to come in. 230 students?
They don't have to come in, so. If they, if they add an addition on the, they're exempt from local land use regulations.
But I would imagine they're not exempt to fire codes and stuff like that.
Correct. Life safety codes, no. Land use regulations, planning board, site plan regs, some, you know.
230 students in that building is gonna be an awful lot of people.
They have to meet life safety, they have to meet the building codes, but we don't regulate those. Those aren't land use regulations. They do have to meet life safety, to the extent, it's a, it's a CARO, it's a Controlled Access Right-of-Way out there on Holland Way. So DOT does, to the extent they need to meet any state requirements, then that would be their responsibility. I'm just talking about their responsibility to the planning board and the site plan regulations.
And they.
They obviously still need to get building permits and that.
And the condominium developer next door that doesn't like the noise from the pool on the other side, they have nothing to say either.
Well, I don't know about that. I mean, there's a lot of avenues with, I'm just talking about planning board approval. There won't be any, well, if you have a hearing, then there'll be an opportunity for them to come and, and speak potentially if.
Talk about their plans.
I'll be honest, Mike, I, I respect you deeply. I don't think it's necessary to bring them in here, myself.
Okay.
But if you think it's valuable.
It's kinda where I'm going.
Then, you know, that's, you're the chair and that's your decision. From my own perspective, you know, non-binding, they're getting going, they gotta go through the rest of the regulations.
Yeah.
You know.
Why are we getting involved? Why do we get involved?
That's what I'm saying.
It's the state law, it gives you the option.
Well, all right, but it's an option.
It's an option.
It's an option.
If they requested it, then maybe we'd say yes, right? But they haven't requested, have they?
They have not.
No.
No, they're just simply following, I spoke with the attorney, they're just submitting, and they have to submit the same thing to the select board, so the select board will also get one and the select board also has the option, not the obligation, to hold a hearing as well. So they, they could too.
If we ask them to come in, is that a noticed meeting? So would the butters get notification?
Yeah, it's not, it's not clear in the state law about, but I think so, yeah. Well, that's what we usually do, practice is, we, we ask them to hold a hearing and notify a bunch.
It's good practice, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, to me, that's maybe just one of the benefits is just so that the butters have the benefit of knowing.
What's happening?
Of being aware of what's going on with the property next door to them, hey, you know. And the opportunity to come in and ask questions to the applicant, I think it's a nice thing to do.
But are we the proper forum for that?
Yeah.
There's no other.
Yeah. The R S A says, "Planning Board or Govern, and/or Governing Body."
Yes, but that's optional.
Right. Oh, wait. Yeah, it's optional.
So that we could take the position, this is not the proper forum.
Right, my, my understanding is the letter to us is not optional, they have to do that. The next step is whether or not this.
Whether we do anything with the planning board.
Yes.
And I feel that, that, I don't, my personal feeling is that I don't think we need to get involved and I don't, I don't, I don't even wanna get involved in it.
Okay.
That's just my feeling.
That's what I hear.
Well, I think that part of our purview is to consider the impact of development on neighbors and so this to me is just an opportunity to, you know, notify neighbors and let, you know, I, I think it's in the, you know, and for full transparency, why not? Now, why not have them in and hear what's going on and let people ask questions if they're interested, if they want to? And if not, it can be a really quick hearing and we could say, "Thank you, goodbye."
Mm-hmm.
The, the only thing is, is I, I haven't run into this, is like. Notification of a bunch, I mean, you know, it's not required in the statute, so, I mean, we do post it in two public places, but we don't have funding or budget to pay for that. We have the applicants pay for it. So, you know, I'd have to ask them to agree to that if we were, you know, otherwise, we'd just post it in two public places.
Any thoughts, Glenn?
Kinda with Jen. I agree with her. I just think it's a, it's transparency, it's opening the door for people in the neighborhood to ask questions. And we may find some things that we're concerned about and/or just some suggestions we might That's all.
Is the, is the select board looking to do this?
This letter just came out today, we're not even sure if the select board got one yet. I haven't seen one and Dave talked to Pam, it could be in the post office box, sitting there.
Well, if yours mail's gonna deliver by then, you may not get it in two more days.
Select board or not.
Right.
But it's a good point, that's why I tried to find the answer to that out, because do you need two hearings?
No, probably not, they're gonna do it anyway.
Maybe, and it might influence the decision of either board if they knew the other one was having one.
The next select board meeting is not until the 31st.
May 30th, yeah. So you might not even make the, well, depends on when you get the letter. But I think it's reasonable, you don't have to have a special meeting, so I, I think they're flexible on the 30 days. I just mentioned it because that's what the rules are.
No, but I just wanna make sure everyone, in the next, usually it's every two weeks.
So let me know. I would think if you wanna decide, you decide and you'd probably, I would recommend the June 9th meeting, because the May 26th meeting is already getting a little full.
Okay. Well, I would, I would say we should go ahead and do it. I think that we got three, three, four members that may be interested in doing that, so let's schedule them for then.
All right, well, actually, you know what? Let me, let me talk to the applicant, it'll be May 26th to June 9th. I mean, I guess the board doesn't really have a.
No.
An opinion on one way or another.
Soon as the January goes on.
But I'll, I'll just try to, if they want, because you never know, sometimes people drop out, you know, and.
The sooner the better for them, I think. I think the sooner the better for them.
So my hearing, the board is requesting the hearing?
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
I'm opposed.
Two oppositions and done?
I'm, I'm, I'm flip-flopping.
Flip-flop, he's on the fence.
He's a flim-flam guy.
And the two ladies.
He can be bought, though.
That's four.
She's, she's hitting me again.
I think I see, I think you got four, right, Lex?
Four, yes.
Four and a half.
John got strong arms.
Don't mess with me.
So you said something about change of use, is that, is that determined by what zone, what's allowed in that zone? Yes. Answer my own question.
It's what?
I may not.
A change of use.
Well, it's exempt from land use regulations.
It's exempt?
So yes, it meets zoning.
Okay.
Use is allowed. Governmental, governmental land uses are allowed anywhere.
Those charter schools.
You know, anywhere.
Yeah, wow. That's where you're gonna go, see. Okay, next item, election of officers. It's time again to select our officers for the forthcoming year. I will speak for my faithful servant here, our clerk, he'd like to retire from that position. He wants to stay on the board, but I've worked him too hard, so he's.
It's a non-position.
Hey, what did you do?
The pay's lousy.
I sit in his chair.
You get the most comfortable chair.
So as I say, it, I think that probably we need to do a little fresh blood.
A fresh blood? Okay.
But since we don't know what you do, we think you do a great job.
So therefore.
You want a chair?
There'll be no transition.
You're good.
Or if you want me to stay on, I'll stay on.
Well, depends on what the board would like. Anybody, is the.
Would you like to leave the room?
Did the nominating committee meet and have a report? That is you three, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
You want us to decide?
Are you, Mr. Brown, you're willing to continue as vice chair or do you wanna be chair?
I'm fine either way. I do, I don't know if anybody else wants to get more involved, though. I've been doing it for a while. So I'm, I'm comfortable either way.
Same here?
Pretty vocally.
Whatever the board would like, yeah.
Then I nominate the existing three, without you, officers.
Three amigos.
Existing officers to.
I was just checking.
Be re-elected for another year's term, one year, yeah.
So you're running the party ticket, is that what you're doing?
Straight party, yeah.
We have to abstain.
Second, I've just nominated them all.
Well, that's four against three.
No, 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 I.
Glenn seconded.
Glenn seconded, okay. You okay with that?
I'm.
All right. Anybody else want to run for anybody? I mean, really, you know, we're, we're willing to share here, you know.
I'm good.
Okay.
Everybody's good.
Enough going on.
I'll say, all in favor.
All right.
Well, I have to abstain.
Yeah, you three abstained, man.
Oh, no, we can vote for the other people.
You vote for the other.
That's, well, but it's not individual.
No, it's a ticket.
It's a ticket, okay.
It's a slate, it's up or down, the whole slate.
How are the remaining four members of?
He might want to flush us right down the river.
That could be.
Yeah, but the waters, the water's poisonous.
Nitrogen'll get you.
All right, so that was it. I'll call a question.
So Pete doesn't get off, huh? Another year. You're in another year, buddy.
Okay.
Hey, I'm gonna. You're a hook deep. Only one way to get off this board, ladies and gentlemen.
We'll have the, we'll have the four non-affected, or the, those that can vote, vote.
Aye.
Yes?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks a lot.
Okay. It's final, we continue where we are. Well, now, before we leave this, it does seem to be.
No.
He's just trying.
Garrett doesn't think.
There, there are also positions to serve on other committees.
Yes, there are.
And I, I don't know what the procedure with respect to that is. I know, John, you've been wandering around in the woods with the historic district folks.
No, you could have offered that a while. You still want that? You just don't go to the meetings.
What I'm getting at, what I'm getting at.
I've been better.
That's my schedule.
And they haven't had much going on, except I had toured all the, the academy stuff before.
Okay.
We went inside the building.
Yeah.
Well, what I'm getting at is the housing advisory.
I'm okay with my.
And whether the board wants me to continue to serve on that committee or not.
Do you want to keep going?
I mean, I'm willing to do it. I'm not contributing anything, and Mrs. Beland, Ms. Belangi will tell you that.
No, that's not true.
Never mind.
You missed the meetings, but that's fine.
Well, but I, I know, I know, I know I was pilloried in town.
So, we're more of a working committee. What we did this last year and a half was different, but it was with Darren, the.
Yeah.
Right, so we'll be getting back to our reports and all that soon.
Okay.
No, I'm perfectly.
All right, okay.
We're all, we all love to have you on.
All time. Glenn and I serve on Rockham Planning Commission.
N H B C.
And there's always one or two others we need to check in to. Well, then there's the Oversight Committee also.
That's right.
You mean the Master Plan Discussion Committee, that all of them said?
Mo pack.
Mo pack.
Which we meet tomorrow, I think, right?
Still active, yeah. Well, okay. I just wanted to bring it up. Okay.
Is there a committee that's not being covered by us, that should be? Do you know?
What? I don't have a.
Thought there was a Rocky, Rocky and Planning Commission was looking for?
Who's on the, the, it's not the Heritage Commission.
I think it was Shaw.
I'm still on it, Lang is, but.
Yeah.
I think we have three, right?
Yeah, we are.
Which I want.
Yeah.
How often does that?
H T C, we're all set.
Doing anything fun?
Heritage, that's you, right?
Yeah.
I have to check into it, see if I missed anything. I thought I had a.
Is this everybody that's on this board now? Here?
Uh, yes, it is.